I call the meeting to order for the September 5th, 2018 Planning Commission. I'd like to excuse Commissioner Davis tonight, some other obligations. To get started, we'll ask Commissioner Argal to call the lead us in the Pledge of Legions.
I would like to. The Pledge of Legions be after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Argal. First item on our agenda is to review the minutes for July 12th and August 1st. We've all had a chance to hopefully look at those. If there's any commissioners that have any questions or comments about that, you can do that now. If no questions or comments, I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes?
Got a motion from Commissioner Menon Hall?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Euler. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The next item is preliminary plat for the Pierce subdivision. We'll ask Mr. Anderson to come up and brief us on that.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. And before I dive into this, I just want to take a quick moment to recognize a local official that's here with us tonight, Ms. Perrins, who represents the Spanish Fork City Youth Council, I think with some kind of a connection to the Planning Commission, if I understand it right. So, we certainly appreciate you being here. If you have any questions, comments, or need anything, just let us know. Pierce subdivision, we looked at this project just a couple of months ago with a proposed zone change. The zone change was approved and a subdivision plat was approved for a two-lot subdivision. Mr. Pierce, the applicant simply would like to do three lots now instead of two. So, that's why it's before the Planning Commission. The Development Review Committee has reviewed the proposal and recommends that it be approved. You can see the additional lot. It's right here. So, initially, we were just looking at two lots in the project. One of the things that we like about the project is that this gives us an opportunity to connect the existing sidewalk and curb and gutter on First South between Maple Mountain High School and the residential subdivision that's just to the west of that, across the frontage of these two properties. That's a big deal. We have a few things going on in the roadway there that we'd simply like to see changed for a few different reasons. And I think in that respect, it'll be a certain enhancement for the neighborhood. We've talked about a couple of different things relative to improvements mainly it focuses on, or mainly our focus has been on. Those improvements to First South, frankly, I think that one of the reasons that Mr. Pierce is now proposing this additional lot is to provide some additional revenue to be able to make the improvements that are required. And again, we're excited to see that happen. This is the frontage. Today, a ditch. You can see here, so this is east looking west along First South. Some of the things that we have in the right-of-way at the moment beyond that, brick entryway and some pretty lavish things that with this project and the improvements that would be installed will be removed, but will give us an opportunity to finish the road there on the north side. This property line on the east side of the developments, this is a neighboring home that's adjacent to the subject property here. This basically right in here is where the two new lots would be located. And again, that's the plat. The applicant's wife has been, I won't say necessarily insistent, but she did ask that a certain name be assigned to that street, and we're comfortable with that. We'll probably know it also as 2060 East. And staff does recommend that the proposed project be approved, subject to the applicant meeting these conditions.
What about those conditions? Is there anything there you need to brief us on?
I think they're all consistent with what was attached to the original approval, except that Lot 3, which is now the remaining part of the property, we just want to clarify that that's not a building lot. Before they could construct that, they'd have to finish some improvements that right now we don't think are necessary to make. For example, a sidewalk on this side of the street. The right-of-way will be dedicated with this plat here so that there will be room to make those improvements in the future. But we would not require a sidewalk here. It would not require a curb and gutter beyond this point here so that the applicant can come up with some way to provide some sort of a turnaround at that end. But...
So, the, on the west side, how far are you suggesting the sidewalk and gutter go? On the west side, how far from the street?
So, speaking still, I'll just say maybe in approximates.
That's it?
Only sidewalk here across the First South frontage.
Okay.
So, nothing north of that on the west side.
On the west side.
For now.
Okay.
When there's any additional development of the property, they would have to install that. And then, no curb and gutter basically beyond this point here.
Okay.
Going north.
All right.
What's the plan with the ditch?
Piped.
Piped, okay.
Yep. The ditch will be piped, see if my cursor will show up. The ditch is, surface is about right here. There's an irrigation structure from there all the way. Yep, will be piped to, actually, no, it won't be, right? There will be no...
No.
No need for the ditch because they're using pressure irrigation, right?
Right.
Okay, sorry.
The ditch is being eliminated and we're going with pressure irrigation.
Yes.
So, the ditch will still continue up this right here, and it goes all the way up through to Fourth North. But the left, the west reach will go away, and they'll connect instead to pressure irrigation right at this point, which benefits us and them a lot of different levels.
I'm assuming that's already in the street, one side or the other, pressure irrigation?
Yeah. It sits right here. So, they'll connect the sewer water, pressure irrigation, and bring it all the way to the end of the street, and then provide services to these two lots with a hydrant at the end to blow off the culinary water, and then the pressure irrigation connection into their sprinkler, sprinkling system that he's going to put in, I presume.
Does the commissioners have any other questions about this? No? This particular project will actually be approved by us. It won't go to the City Council, so we're not making a recommendation. We're actually approving it. If there's no other questions, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Pierce subdivision preliminary plat. According and include the findings and conditions that have been discussed.
Got a motion from Commissioner Tag?
I'll second it.
A second from Commissioner Argal. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next preliminary plat is for Canyon Gate.
Once again, thank you. So, the subject property for Canyon Gate is immediately north of the Neighborhood Walmart. It's right at the intersection of 2550 East and Canyon Road. The Neighborhood Walmart project was designed completely with the intent that this property would develop in a way that I think is very similar to what we'll talk about tonight. I do want to mention that what is before the commission tonight is just a subdivision, just the creation of a number of different lots. Better count before I misspeak. Six different lots in all. Check that, seven different lots that would be created in part so that the applicant could install some infrastructure that I'll touch on in a little bit more detail in just a minute. Subject property currently, maybe to talk about this, Zone Commercial 2. The zoning was changed to Commercial 2 previous to the Neighborhood Walmart being approved. The different uses that we would anticipate the applicant having there, and from what I understand, what the applicant anticipates having there, probably a mixture of retail, maybe a little bit of professional office space and that sort of thing, things that are permitted. And again, the types of things that we'd hope to see in the Commercial 2 zone. Again, to kind of touch on the relationship between a site plan approval and a preliminary plat, again, not to be too redundant, but what's on the council, I'm sorry, the commission's agenda tonight, just the plat approval. We'll also get into, really in the next phase, which is having a site plan approved, a much more detailed review of what the property would become. So, rather than at the plat stage, but at the site plan stage, that's when we require the applicant to provide landscaping plans, potentially things that would give us some detail as to how buildings will be designed. Oftentimes, we also require signs, I'm sorry, plans for signage and a number of different things. In essence, really anything that you would see in the development. And that's a review that we do as staff. Development Review Committee reviews those and either approves or denies them. So, we have pretty...
Dave, does this, this step then maybe allow the developer to go ahead and do some roads and maybe some utility, not utilities, but just put some concept on the ground while he does these other things? Is that part of the reason for this? So, it doesn't hold them up from maybe making that next step of starting some progress?
As I understand it, that's really their intent.
Okay.
And I'll let the applicant speak more to this, but they're at a point now where marketing the property is probably their next big step, having some people sign on and to have a reason really to plan at a different level of detail than what we're looking at today. And again, I'll let you maybe just speak to kind of the concept of having a road and some infrastructure installed now, which I know makes sites much more marketable. We can take somebody out and actually show improvements that have been constructed today. If somebody were to fly in from out of state and look at the site or that type of a thing, it's what we saw earlier tonight. It's a field, hard to get kind of the same type of vision and for maybe them to represent the property with the same credibility as you would have if it were a little bit more refined, a little bit more developed and improved. And that's really what we're after today, is just getting an approval to where they could take that next step. But if you have any thoughts, questions, or concerns about this, just at a conceptual level, I think that's great to discuss with the applicant tonight as well. I always like to pump applicants for any information that they can give us about prospective tenants and that type of a thing, which I sort of say in jest, not entirely, but it's always exciting to hear what they have in mind and who maybe they might be working with, understanding that it's rare that we actually get people to be too open in a meeting that's televised. But staff, again, we've reviewed it. We've recommended it be approved, subject to several different conditions being met. Again, this is specifically what would be approved tonight. I believe that we're being a little bit redundant, almost taking kind of a belt and suspenders approach with at least the second condition there. I believe they have that in place already with Walmart. But I think very appropriately so. We do want to make sure that there is an opportunity as the property develops, whenever it happens, that is west of this site, that there is an ability to make some type of an appropriate vehicular connection between what I'm guessing is going to be a residential neighborhood and this development. I think the applicant appreciates that and supports that. So, with this plat, we would get, and he's been in place to allow for that.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. We'll go ahead and let the applicant come up and tell us who his renters are.
Okay. My name's Sandy McLeve. Yeah, so we're in a process, we've been marketing for the past, while we were going through this whole process, we've been marketing to a number of different retailers and just kind of be open-minded on how to best use the site, really maximize the site. We're still open to, if a new retailer comes and kind of has a change, we try to make it work as best we can. From kind of what we see, the best uses and how the flow works, we see this being some kind of a lube type station type of thing to use this corner that's kind of a tough space. These buildings here, here will be multi-tenant with the drive-through. This most likely will be a pad user for a fast food restaurant. Del Taco's interested, they've expressed interest to us. They're supposed to do a site tour later this month. We're hopeful that it will go really well. This we see being some kind of a bank use. This one will be multi-tenant, also could be some kind of professional office type use, fitting in with kind of a retail, professional office use. Again, this could be a mixture of that same thing. We have an interest from a steakhouse, a local steakhouse restaurant in that corner. And yeah, so our kind of next step plan would be, we have the cross-access agreement with Walmart. To help market the property, we would like to provide this main road and then the utilities so they could be stubbed to each parcel. And that way, a potential tenant or purchaser could come in, they could get a good visualize of the site. As it currently stands, you see it from here, and you just see a field. We flew it with a drone, but even then, you can't hardly get to know what it feels like and, you know, bright beam off the frontage and everything. So, we feel like that'd be a great next step for us in moving forward in the marketing of the property. Any questions you may have, I can answer.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Sandy?
So, my question would be in this, maybe for Dave as well, parking strut, parking layout, parking design. Whenever you get a bunch of small businesses like that in a compact area, your concern is parking and flow.
Parking and flow, yeah.
Because you look right now in the city, we've got the parking area where Needers is at in Costa Vida, and that at times is a nightmare. And I don't know who designed that or what, but that probably could have been improved on. So, how much time do you spend on making sure that the layout of the parking is actually going to flow? What kind of a professional is it that looks at that and makes sure that things are in place? Because I see a few different places. There's that one in Spanish Fork, and then there's Improv, just north of the hospital where Chick-fil-A is. That whole parking area is a nightmare as well. And you want to make sure that as you're planning things, that you're not going to inadvertently put in something like that.
Yeah, I would agree with you. We've, we've tried to analyze that. We've, you know, we've done a number of different retail centers, and we know parking and flow is a big thing. We have this blocked off, this main kind of arterial to enter the site, so you can't, you can't be backing out or anything onto there, so you can have flow. We also provide good stacking lanes for the drive-through, so that way, there will be available stacking and minimize kind of congestion and things like that. The architect we had do this is, he works with all the major retailers and fast food, so he's very familiar with how to best lay out a site as far as parking and with stacking for drive-throughs and things like that. So, we've been trying to address that as well.
Just maybe to add to that, we have requirements for parking. They're based on square footage and the type of use. So, for example, the restaurant use is going to have a different parking requirement in terms of the number of spaces that would be required per thousand square feet, let's say, than a professional office use would have. And honestly, that forces us when we're looking at projects at this stage to do a little bit of guessing and to make some assumptions about, okay, so if this building here were a professional office use, then it would require X number of parking spaces. And, you know, if these were restaurants, you know, we'd add that up, and it's just a matter of math. But because we don't know who those end-users are entirely going to be, we're making some assumptions at some point in time to try to determine how much parking is required. And then, the other thing that comes into play then, over the life of a development like this, is that you have a professional office space that 10 years down the road becomes a restaurant or that type of a thing. And, you know, that sometimes makes a mess or causes problems. At this stage right now with this applicant, just by way of casual observation, there's a lot going on in this concept plan. I think they've, they've made a good effort to be as efficient and probably aggressive as they could to fit a lot of square footage on the site. But as we go from this stage to the next one of really analyzing, you know, that relationship of square footage to space that's available for things like parking and landscaping, that's where the sites become really constrained spatially. And instead of maybe this being a 4,000-square-foot building, they might only be able to fit a 3,000-square-foot building on, just because of, you know, the other demands that the development as a whole might have.
So, Dave, to that point then, if we approve this tonight, we, it doesn't mean, I mean, just because there's seven buildings there, we approve this, it doesn't mean that when it really comes down to knowing what them businesses are, they might only end up with, say, six. They, the city would have that ability to still control that?
Well, it's more a matter of we have requirements that they have to meet.
Okay.
So, I think they'd have every opportunity to build a building on each lot, to maybe use these multi, these are, appear to be designed as multi-tenant buildings, for example, though. They might have to scale back the sizes on some of those in order to meet our requirements. Now, that all being said, we don't like sites, I mean, use the phrase "overparked," where there's parking that's provided that doesn't get used. So, we, we do work with applicants to try to use sites as efficiently as possible. And oftentimes, if you have a development like this where there are different uses, particularly professional office and, you know, other retail uses and restaurants, they oftentimes have parking demands that peak at different times throughout the day. So, they would have with this some type of a cross-parking arrangement in place, even though you might have, you know, a different property owner for each of the lots that says, hey, if, if my customer for retail building G wants to park over on your property, you know, that's just how it works. And, you know, the parking landscaping is all uniformly maintained and that type of a thing. You can enjoy some economy of scale when it comes to parking because of that, that mixture of uses. Where it becomes a problem, and I think this is why we have some of the issues that we have in Canyon Creek, is we have a lot of restaurants. They have very similar uses, same peak demand times, not only throughout the day, but throughout the week. And you've got some funny angles as well on a particular phase of Canyon Creek. They have a little bit of that happening here as well, that not only doesn't make it hard sometimes to find a place to park, but also just to navigate the site and that type of a thing. So, those are certainly real challenges as well.
Okay.
Have you guys looked at where that west easement access would be?
Not really specifically, but they've got a few different places that seem to make some sense. We also talked about the idea potentially of having a connection out here somehow, which would require redesign from what we're seeing, at least on this concept plan here. I think it's going to be really hard to define that until we know more about it.
So, for now, we've got right here, right here, and right here.
Bingo, yeah. And at least as I envision it now, we'd approve the site with the idea that potentially any place along this west boundary, there could be that, that connection. Is that as with you guys?
Yeah, I think that would be a problem.
So, that's...
Yeah, I have another, I have another question, and that is, I believe our trail system comes right across this side here. Does that affect them at all? Is that anything part of this? Does there have to be any easements tying this in around this area? I'm just curious how it's going to work.
It'd work just like it did with Walmart, where they, they constructed the trail and they improved their frontage, just like it works through the Canyon Creek development there, adjacent to US 6 or in front of Arby's or any of those properties that have frontage on that road. UDOT, in this case, owns, I think, all of the property up to their property line, so we'd have to work with UDOT to get their approval on plans, but so far, that hasn't been a problem.
Sounds good.
Any other questions or comments from the commissioners? Thank you, Sandy, for your presentation on that.
Sorry, one last question. Will they later present a landscape plan for this as well?
Yes, that's part of the site plan review. We're happy to share that with you guys if you'd like, but typically, that's something that just stops at the DRC, DRC-approved site plan, so...
Will we see this project again, this body?
Not unless something changes.
Okay. I would maybe make just a comment. Sandy, I liked your idea of this being a main road there with no backing or that, but if that's main, you might just make sure that's wide enough for a couple of, it seems like that's the struggle we have with some of these delivery trucks and stuff coming into these places to deliver product, and they end up, you know, rolling over these edges. And, you know, if that's, if that's the main one, you know, maybe add another four or five foot of width, just a suggestion.
Make it obvious.
If we're not going to see this again, that would be a suggestion that, what, I don't know if we add this to the notes or if it's something we just ask you to keep an eye out for, but maybe learns from some of the things that Canyon Creek has caused some problems with.
Sandy, that's a great question, yeah.
Okay.
And I think that's particularly relevant with the idea that we probably do want some other kind of connection over here, so, you know, maybe planning for one route to be just a little bit more conducive to that.
I know there, again, at Needers and the NIBO Credit Union, both of those corners landscaping has been, they just get rolled over by these delivery trucks that can't make that turn.
You're talking about this turn right here? Or that one?
This one right here. If you look at either one of them corners, you can see tire tracks going up and over the curb, and it's just...
Part of the issue too is that the curb sticks out further on this end than it does on this end. So, as you're turning left or turning right right here, you think the curbs line up, but they don't, and so you have a tendency to take that a little closer than you should.
That's tricky in all kinds of different ways, right? That's not ideal.
Yeah. Anyway, just a suggestion that you might pass on to DRC. Is that who would...
Yep.
Okay. Is there any other comments that the commissioners would like to make about this project before we entertain a motion?
I don't know.
Nothing? Okay. So, again, this will not go to the City Council. This will be approved by us or not. I'd entertain a motion.
Make a motion for the approval of the Canyon Gate preliminary plat with the conditions that exist.
Okay. Got a motion from Commissioner Euler?
A second.
A second from Commissioner Tag. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I don't see the applicant here for the Meadow Creek Ridge project yet. How would you feel about going to Legacy Farms next?
Yeah.
If you're comfortable with that.
Yep, I think it'd be fine.
Maybe else coming for you guys? Okay.
Okay, so we will move to the Legacy Farms preliminary plat. Dave will...
Yeah.
What's that? Did Dave show up?
Yeah. We're all set.
Okay.
Um, I have to gather my thoughts about where to start. Legacy Farms project was approved a number of years ago. It's master plan development. It's probably the largest project in terms of both acreage and the number of homes that will be built in the project that Spanish Fork City has approved to date. It, from day one, has intended to be a distinct project, say even a cut above other subdivisions in the community. other subdivisions in the community. Uh, to that end, uh, there are amenities that are planned in the development, parks, trails, uh, and other significant amenity, or some design standards that exist for, uh, the homes that will be built in Legacy Farms. And the applicant, uh, and staff are here tonight to propose a change to the existing approval that would allow for the development of an LDS church on space in the project that's currently dedicated or planned for a number of lots for single-family homes, with the idea that the applicant then would be able to reallocate those home sites into two different parts of the project. One area that is planned for townhomes, so the number of townhomes that they would build would, would increase if this is approved, and they would be built, uh, or additional homes would be built on land that right now is planned for a detention basin in the development. There are some other things that staff and the applicant are working to address, uh, that genuinely we as staff think would be improvements, uh, for the project and the timing of the construction of some, some pretty significant public facilities in the development. Um, and those things are all being articulated in an amended development agreement or an amended annexation agreement, um, that we and the staff, I'm sorry, that we as staff and the applicant, uh, are talking about just about every day in anticipation of having that done and ready for presentation to the city council here in the next couple of weeks. So, that being said, let's talk about just a couple of the, the details relative to the, the proposal. At this scale, it's a little bit difficult maybe to, to make out everything that we're seeing. This is Spanish Fork Parkway, both a part of it that's been built and portions that have yet to be constructed. This is the Rocky Mountain Power Transmission Line Corridor that goes through the project. Uh, this area over here, in two different sections that are owned by different property owners, are planned for townhome development. And we have parks that are planned to be constructed in Legacy Farms. In fact, thank you, um, this right here will be the next park that the city will construct, and some of that construction will be funded by the applicant in accordance with the existing development agreement that we have. Uh, remaining parks over here, um, as proposed, would be constructed by the city with funding that would be provided by the applicant, and we plan to, to augment that funding with city funds, um, to add certain facilities to the park. Uh, we just started working recently with landscape architect and started to have some pretty detailed constru- um, detailed conversations with Rocky Mountain Power about different ways that we could make improvements in this corridor here, which incidentally runs all the way through this northeast bench part of the community, from an old gravel pit that's down by the corner of US eighty-nine and Highway six, all the way up to the railroad tracks and beyond, just north of the site that IHC is building on. Uh, we kind of taking the long-term vision of that corridor, hope eventually someday to see what I would call really a regional trail connection, something that could tie, uh, different facilities together, perhaps the Bonneville Shoreline Trail on the south end into, uh, maybe trails that would eventually run along the shoreline of Utah Lake, um, different trail networks all the way up into Provo and further north. Uh, and that's something that we've just recently started to work on, and the applicant has committed some things that are connected to what we'll talk about tonight in terms of enhancements, uh, to that corridor. But, uh, just to try to boil everything down as succinctly as I can, uh, what's before the commission tonight is this new plat that would allow for the development of a church here, and the homes that were planned to be constructed there would be reallocated to an area up here, adjacent to the railroad tracks, and over here in that, that townhome area.
So that, is, is, you've got a two-color, you've got the gray here, is all the gray this discussion?
Those are sections of the project that have already been approved, that have final plat approval.
So we're, we're talking about this?
Or that, that would soon have final plat approval.
Are we just talking about that?
Uh, in my view, we're talking about the whole project.
Okay.
Um, before we can make, maybe to say it a little bit differently, um, we have a preliminary plat, that's what basically you're seeing there tonight, that encompasses all of the acreage that is identified here as part of Legacy Farms. And in order to make changes to the density in different parts of the project, to make changes to the street layout, or different things like that, we go through an amendment process, and that's why we're here with the planning commission tonight. Now, in this case, there's kind of another level of complexity, maybe another layer, which is an agreement that the city has, and the current preliminary plat is an exhibit to that agreement. So in order to let the applicant go forward with any changes, we first would have to, or the city council first would have to approve a new plat that would be a new exhibit to that agreement, and maybe we could say, kind of while we're at it, we're making some other changes or recommending that some other changes to that agreement, um, recommending that those changes be made, and those are the things that we anticipate having done here in the next couple of weeks. I had another thing that, uh, just in terms of staff's review, uh, the Development Review Committee, we've reviewed the applicant's proposal in terms of, um, you know, the, the modified layout, we're comfortable with that. Uh, there are some other changes that, I was trying to gauge how much detail to go into or not to go into, but, for example, the applicant has, has made some design changes to this part of the project with some intersections and things of that nature that we think are, are definitely enhancements. Um, this connection here through the Rocky Mountain Power Corridor is a new addition that doesn't exist on the currently approved preliminary plat that I think we as staff feel very good about, very pleased to see an additional connection across a corridor where connections frankly are very limited. Um, and, uh, the Development Review Committee reviewed this proposal just a couple of weeks ago, recommended that it be approved, you know, simply with the understanding that there are still details that need to be worked out and things that need to be resolved, um, I'd say as well, just understandings that need to be memorialized in an amended, an amended annexation agreement, and, uh, provided that we can get that agreement finished up and get it executed, we're comfortable recommending that these changes be approved.
Okay. Um, in this first part here, Dave, where you talk about the approval, I can't read into that where it talks much about the density, not the density, but the amount of units wanting to be the same. And in our field trip, we kind of discussed that. That's a, a main point of this, isn't it? Because the church is going to be, uh, proposed there, that they still end up with the same number of units. Is that important, that that is verbalized? I, I just can't see it in there. I can see it in the first item of the key issue, but in that left quadrant there, I can't see where it's really in the spirit of this.
Mm-hmm.
How important is that?
Um.
That's kind of what we're talking about here, isn't it? Is, is the amount of units?
That certainly is part of what we're talking about, and frankly, that has been a significant sticking point between the applicant and staff.
Okay.
Simply put, I think we disagree, and probably disagree pretty adamantly about the proper way to deal with the addition of something like a church site into a project of this nature and them keeping the same number of units. Um, in other words, I, I don't necessarily think that is the right way that things should, should be done, that rather if you add a church and you have seven hundred and fifty units to work with, but that church site takes up space that previously fifteen home sites were located on, that instead of seven hundred and fifty units, you go down to seven hundred and thirty-five.
Right.
And we spent six months, eight months, nine months, frankly, arguing, you know, no progress at all relative to what the applicant, uh, would like to see happen with the church site here. Um, and for better or for worse, I would say that we as staff, um, did have a, uh, a change of perspective on some of those questions and how maybe to best approach them, and with the idea that the applicant, sort of in exchange for being able to include a church site and still keep those home sites in the project, with them doing some things like constructing a wall adjacent to homes, uh, along the power corridor, them enhancing some trail connections in the project, and doing different things like that, um, they've helped in some way to provide some compensation, really to this community, for, uh, the fact that they would have both the church and the home sites kept. Now, you can make whatever decisions you want relative to that being a good or a bad idea. Um, frankly, I think I might have been the hardest sell on the part of staff in terms of, uh, having that change of perspective. Um, and I'll say this, one thing that, uh, is currently in the draft amended agreement that I've referenced a couple of times is simply language that clarifies that. If, for example, subsequent to this being approved, let's say the applicants wanted to sell additional land for the construction of a church over here, and that church would go where today their plans for nine residential lots, then those lots are simply off the table, they're out of the project, you know, that is density that's, that's gone.
Right.
Um, so for whatever it's worth, I think that's an enhancement, getting the, some additional level of clarity from what there apparently is between the staff and, and the applicant today, but, um.
Well, and we, and, you know, we can discuss how we feel about that, I just, if that's a, if that's a key point, I think it ought to be in there. If that, if that number, seven hundred and fifty, was part of the original vision.
Uh-huh.
What we're asking for here is to continue the seven fifty, I think it should be spelled out so that we know what we're approving.
I think that makes perfect sense, and frankly, probably downplayed that a little bit in writing, you know, it's a pretty succinct report. Um, I think you're absolutely right.
So I have a question about density, and, uh, I thought, and I'm not disagreeing, I'm asking for clarification, I thought that there were, mm, I don't even think it's city ordinances, I think it was state, that you can't trade density for amenities anymore, and how is this compliant with that? And is that, or am I just making that up in my mind, like messing up some other concept? I don't know.
Um, I'm not aware of anything in city ordinance or state code that wouldn't allow a city to have code provisions that would, would allow for some kind of quid pro quo between an applicant or developer and the city. In fact, that's, that's really why we have the master plan development kind of program, or at least that's how it originally came about, was so that, you know, if an applicant wanted, instead of having forty units in a project, having fifty, but they were willing to build a pavilion for the city, you know, in exchange for that additional density, that's, that's kind of the origin of it.
I thought we weren't, I don't know where that came from, I thought, maybe it was when I was on the Parks and Rec Committee that there was discussion that you couldn't, it was no longer allowed to, okay, if you build a park, we'll allow you to build twenty more. We'll give you smaller, you can build something.
Now, we have gotten away from that, I'll say that, as a city, so.
Okay.
Um, if, for example, to, to use a, a different fieldstone project as an example, one that's down adjacent to the Spanish Fork River, that project was approved in an era where it was spelled out in black and white, that if a developer did X, then they got a certain density bonus in terms of a percentage and that kind of a thing, and frankly, we weren't very pleased with the results that we were getting from that. So we made changes some time ago to that kind of a, of a program that bound the city to do certain things. Um, one of the arguments that we've had with the applicant is that the city code does say clearly that, um, when it comes to calculating density, you can't count school sites and church sites or commercial sites in an equation that, for example, would be, if you can have two and a half units per acre on a hundred acre site, but ten acres of that's for a school, then it's not two and a half units per acre times a hundred, it's two and a half units per acre times the remaining ninety, and that's how you get to that, and that's, that's partly where I've been hung up on the idea that they can add a church and still have the same density. Um, it seems, in my view, to run contrary to that, that provision of our code, but I'll say this as well, that, um, our city code would allow, with the zoning that's in place here, for them to add a church site and add additional units in the project. Um, the idea simply there is that, you know, those are, those are negotiated because of different things that the applicant's bringing to the table to enhance the community, and that is what we're talking about.
Dave, is, is the church site being donated to the church, or the, is the church going to purchase it?
I believe the church is purchasing it, but I'll let Mr. Young answer that.
Uh, because one of the things, uh, that are appealing to any development are what kind of amenities are in the development or in its proximity. And, uh, if you're looking at real estate opportunities to buy a home or something, they always put in there certain things that are close, and one is always a school, a church, a park, a golf course maybe, other things like that, and, and church seems to be one of those things that is appealing to someone who is looking to purchase a home or a condo or any residence. And so I guess my question is, is, is if they're going to be paid for the lots that are going to be lost in this subdivision, why does the applicant feel that they have to be completely reimbursed for those number of lots, when that should actually enhance the sellability of these lots and of this development? We've got a lot of homes in here, a lot of them, and, uh, the, the lots that would be lost in there, they're real lots, it'll be lost. I don't know if the loss of lots is commensurate with the number of units that we're trying to make up, seems like we're double dipping a little bit there. They get paid for the lots, and they go ahead and get the lots back again. Is it, I, I guess my, my question is, is, is the value of having a church there, is there a value or is there not? And is that a value in the community? Is it a value in this development? And I think it is.
And you're not looking for me to answer any of those, right? Cause I.
Uh, I'd like to have answers to all of them. But, uh, maybe it's a comment as much as, as much as a, as a question, but it is a question that I think is a valid one, is how, this, this is a development, this is something that's been in the works for a long, long time, and I don't think that anybody ever envisioned a development of this size that wouldn't have a church, or that wouldn't have a park. I think that that's, that goes unsaid. And so I don't know what changed from the time the concept started with Legacy Farms to now, that now, the, the, the density has to be there in order for this development to work and be profitable. Uh, as I look at the, as I look at how this is laid out, you know, there are some lots that are larger lots, unless those are for condos or something else that are going to have multiple units, but, uh, there are a lot of smaller lots, and especially around that church area and stuff like that. And then back over here, we know that we're going to have some other. And then back over here, we know that we're going to have some other high density. I guess it's just a question in my mind, what is the need or what is the applicant's feeling on that other than I can just get fifteen more lots to sell?
Yeah.
And you're being paid for the property that's going to be taken.
I'll answer one part of that that I think I should. Not that any part of what you're asking are bad questions. I think the applicant can answer them much better than I can. But I do believe, having been involved with this project really from the beginning, that we always anticipated there would be a need, particularly for Latter Day Saint Church to have sites in the development. And there was some effort made from day one to have those sites planned for in the development. And it was that church that in fact said that they would prefer to wait until the development got underway and at some point in the future to to purchase lots than to be involved on the front end. So I think we expected this day to come, when we'd be looking at a change that's like what's proposed. What I did not ever expect was somebody to propose to put a church in the project and expect the number of units in the development to stay the same. So that certainly, and that, like I said, I mean, that's that's been a real source of just disagreement between staff and the applicant.
Dave, I've got two questions. In the initial preliminary plat, there's a retention basin right here. What changed that now that's no longer needed and and they can put homes there?
We started requiring developers to keep their storm drain water on site on a per plat basis. Is that fair to say, Mike? Each plat, most of the time that water is is retained underground. And we use the the phrase low-impact development. Their 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 plastic milk crate-like looking boxes that create voids in the ground that stormwater is kept in. And one of the benefits of that program is that we no longer need to have the detention basins like what we have throughout a good part of the community to to maintain or to deal with that stormwater. So, Mike, if I'm wrong about any part of that, yeah, this is, this is the new program. And this is indeed why we don't now have a need for more of a regional kind of a detention basin on the north end of Legacy Farms.
So if we don't make this change as is, that would still be a retention?
You know, it's land that's owned by the city today. It was dedicated for that purpose of of stormwater detention. We would use it for something.
So my next question, this preliminary plan obviously shows where the church would be along with the additional, what, homes or whatever that would be built? The additional density, did they submit a plan or is there a plan that shows how this would be with the church and not increasing the density?
I don't think we've seen that. I think, yeah, the different iterations that we've seen all have.
So it's always been with the assumption that that additional density is going to come if a church is built?
Yes, and I I apologize, but just out of respect for your time, I abbreviate a year's worth of discussions down and miss chunks here and there. But part of what was a little bit contentious between staff and the applicant was that their initial proposal, I kept the number of townhomes the same, I left this property untouched and just simply fit the additional density in kind of this area here by making the lots smaller. And that was something that that we as staff really recoil at with the idea that this, again, it's supposed to be a cut above other projects in the neighborhood. And already, things are pretty tight in Legacy Farms, so the idea that we would get tighter, I mean, that particularly was something that really isn't off-putting to think about. But as we kind of progressed and started looking at some different ways to to deal with things, frankly, I do think that adding density over here, nobody's going to notice that. I mean, truthfully, nobody will recognize that as being.
Tom, like what's the addition?
So there is seventy-one now, is that right? Sixty-nine going to seventy-eight, so it's nine additional.
Nine additional here, and then what have we got up here that we'd be adding?
I was thinking it was seven.
But the retention, we don't need the retention.
We don't need it.
So it doesn't really?
So we've looked at that almost as a, right, the community's not losing anything.
So another question then, if it's property currently owned by the city, do they have intentions of purchasing that property from the city? Or is there an exchange happening there?
The exchange would happen in part relative to that kind of give and take. So some of the things that the applicants offered would would be tied to that exchange.
So I have one more question, just relative to precedent or future experiences with this. How often has this ever occurred? Not that a church has been built where homes are going to be. I mean, it seems like a lot of times the church purchases the land, I mean, like just down here near the freeway, the church purchased the land and did it themselves. Versus, you know, this scenario where we're trying to rearrange to make everyone happy. Has this ever, is this a common thing that's happened? Is this something that will happen again in the future? How common is this specific experience? Do you know what I'm asking?
Yeah, I think, I'm trying to think of the last time we worked with the church to purchase land in an existing development, which was twelve or thirteen years ago, so it's been that long.
It's not too common.
When the church did something like this, instead of just going out and buying a vacant parcel and building on that. And this is unique as well, just that question of density and different things like that, this has not happened again or happened before. Like I am trying to strongly suggest wouldn't happen again, I think, in in the same kind of way.
So I've got a question for the applicant. Kind of going along with what John had to say.
Dylan Young with Fieldstone Homes.
Thanks. So from what I'm seeing, you're, the development, Fieldstone, will get money from the sale of the property to the church. You're getting the property here that the city is exchanging. You'll get increased homes over here where the townhomes are going. What are you guys in exchange giving up to make this a better community for the people that are going to live there?
Well, just for some background, and and Dave's done a good job. And there definitely has been a lot of discussion for over a year now on this project and this situation. So before I answer that, just a little bit of background on the argument versus the density. We're not increasing a number of units on the project at all. The project was approved with a vested density in the development agreement. Our stance differs from staff's that we believe that the project has a number of units in the development agreement that are granted to the project, right? And staff's stance was, as pertains to the code, that he talked about where, you know, you don't, you can't count the the ground that the church or a school would sit on towards that density. We we believe and feel we're different just because of of the development agreement that's in place with the landowners that we've acquired as part of the project. So we are in fact, we we do in fact lose one lot. We treat the church lot as one lot. We go from seven hundred and fifty-one units to seven hundred and fifty. But we don't increase the number of units on the project. We have shifted them around. And we have worked with staff, the the first and big hurdle that we had was, like like Dave mentioned, was squeezing the lots to to smaller lots in that west end. I think we've come to some really good solutions to fix that. And in this west side now, actually throughout the project, our lot sizes are completely consistent with the original approval. In most cases, they are larger, a little larger than they were in the original. That is mostly in part due to the the ability to move some of those units to the townhome piece, which we've always felt, and I think Dave would agree with us, the townhome piece was wasn't very dense ever anyways. And even now, it's right around eight units to the acre, which isn't a really high-dense townhome site. So now, getting back to your question.
Can we stop right there though?
Yeah.
So eight isn't very dense, and that's after the shift, the proposed shift, because we can't see that obviously with the
Correct, yeah.
Shift there. And Dave, do you agree that eight's pretty good density in a townhome area like this one? Would you agree with Mr. Young?
Yeah, by way of comparison, the Parkview Townhomes down north side of Volunteer Drive, that's close to eleven units to the acre there. The Ridge Townhomes, that's close to twelve units to the acre. That's the project that's just east of the neighborhood Walmart. Yeah, kind of in that that same neighborhood. You can do townhomes of up to fifteen or sixteen units to the acre. So eight, and it does kind of depend on the actual unit design and that kind of a thing. But like I said, truthfully, I don't think anybody will notice the difference from a design perspective.
Thank you.
So getting, like, answer that question?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. So the, getting back to the detention basin area, the question regarding the retention area, that that land was dedicated by the landowners to the city as part of the project. So there's two kind of, I mean, there's two views. The city does own the property now. It was dedicated to the project for a detention basin before the city decided to implement the LID. And so with the implement implementation of the LID, it is no longer needed. It was presented to us to to use that land to help disperse, you know, to help disperse those lots and make sure that the west lots remain bigger. As far as compensation goes, as part of the amended development agreement that Dave's mentioned, we are anticipating a contribution for those. That's that's all being worked on between attorneys right now, but we do anticipate settling. We've, our offer at this point has been seventy-five thousand dollars for that piece of ground. So that's, it will be yet to be determined with the development agreement. That's where we stand on that. Was that, did that answer most of the questions?
Yeah, what what else? Because obviously you're benefiting or you wouldn't do it.
Yes, so.
What else are you doing, other than increasing the amount of vehicles that are going to be driving on these streets, which isn't a benefit to the residents that will live there? What are you doing to make that a better community?
Well, so going back again, the way, I think this will answer some of the multiple questions we received. A church site is generally anticipated with any development, right? But the church doesn't, when I say the church, the LDS church doesn't work on the premise where they're going to go and acquire ground before developments happen. They work on the idea that we'll let development occur and dictate where we need a church, and then we'll go in and we'll, and they'll pay more because, you know, because it's not agricultural anymore, that it's homes, but that's a choice that they make because they want to see where growth is first. We work with the church on and throughout the state on a lot of projects. And that's the way that, that's why you don't see, Tracy, you mentioned, how often does this happen? It's why you don't see it happen that often, because the church comes in later. And a lot of developers don't want, they would rather not sell to the church and lose the lots. In this situation, the church has approached us. It's a large project, we agree. There is a need. We think it's a, as John mentioned, we think it's a very great benefit to the community. We think it will enhance the community, and we don't oppose that at all. That's definitely something that we see. We, the, so when they come to us and and want a church site, we're willing to work with them. And we believe that within the development agreement, we have the right to to do that and keep those units on site.
Do they, does the church come and say, I like this piece of property right here? Or do you, as the development owners, kind of direct them to a certain area?
We gave, we provided a concept. We said, we think, they tell us about what size. And then we, we actually did multiple concepts on where we thought a church would work. And then we picked the concept we liked and we presented to them. And and that's all part of negotiating with the church. If they, they say they want a chapel, and then later they say, never mind, we found one somewhere else. But in this instance, they do want this site. And we've got, we have two alternatives. We have this alternative, and we have the alternative of staying where we're at with the current approval. So in addition to, we tie, we type, and I don't know if Dave would agree with me or not, I think he would, but we tie four things to this approval. And in kind of separating two things, I guess. The approval is a change in the layout, mostly on the west side, a little bit of density transfer to the townhome side and to the north end with the detention basin. As part of this this change, there is the seventy-five thousand dollar contribution for the detention basin area. There's some, there's an access across the Rocky Mountain Power Corridor. And then you were going to get to it, I don't think you had yet, some improvements within the right-of-way where the trails cross the road. That's another, that's one of the other points that we've, one of the other things that have been addressed. And then the fourth is the move, the moving of the townhome units to, or sorry, the units to the townhome piece. So those are the four, those are four things that we believe are associated with the change. Now, there's a lot of other things that are being worked on between staff and Fieldstone that we see as a separate item, but something that staff and Fieldstone wants to tie into this and get done now. And that is the the amended development agreement. Staff and, and I don't think there's any disagreement, just fine lining, fine tuning all of the items in there now. But one of those issues that staff has and with Fieldstone is that we want to keep the units. So we're going to address that in the amended agreement, that it doesn't happen again. In the approved development agreement, it's not clear enough. And I, that's why we've had the argument and why we, where we stand where we stand, and staff stands where they stand. But moving forward with an amended development agreement, we want to change that moving forward. So that if we do, if the church does want another site, we lose those units. I'm sure there's more questions, so.
Yeah, so I'm just curious, where does the underground storage water go? Where's it going to be located?
Everywhere.
Goes under every lot?
Yeah, so it's not under the lots, it's in the park strips throughout the project. Trying to remember, what is it called?
Those go in there, that's where they're installed.
R-tanks. Yeah, they're called R-tanks.
R-tanks?
Yeah, and they're generally, so if you have this strip of lots, they're generally, there's a system of them that goes for probably four or five lots, and then there's a break, and then it starts again. And there's inlets in the road, and they go in into all of those, you know, those underground storage tanks. But they are between the curb and the sidewalk throughout the project and along Spanish Fork Parkway as well.
Generally, generally speaking.
Yeah.
What's the size of the lots in the frontage that you have? Looks like they're fairly, fairly consistent.
One of the pages you would, there, it does have, and I believe they're, I, man, we went through all this analysis, but it's been so long. They're all over six thousand square feet and range from sixty, sixty probably to
Fifty to seventy.
There you go.
We tried to make, we tried to do everything within a sixty-seven foot range, put everything at sixty-seven to seventy-seven. We have some lots that drop below that. Sixty-seven and and in the original, it was, there were some lots in the fifty range and sixty range. Going to sixty-seven allows us to do a third car garage on almost every lot. Even these.
Pretty nice homes then.
The ones that you've adjusted will still be large enough for a third car garage.
All these, this is in that area that's northwest of the church site. And they're all, and you can see, we've, we've tried to make them sixty-seven. Because of the design guidelines, there's a lot of redundancy requirements in this community. So you'll see there's an occasional seventy-seven thousand square foot or a seven thousand seven hundred square foot lot with a seventy-seven foot frontage. That allows us to do a rambler, which helps break up the redundancy in the community.
So with that many lots and that small of a space, what do you guys do to differentiate or make sure each home has its own uniqueness?
That's all in the design guidelines. There's pages. Um, that's all in the design guidelines. There's pages of what. I mean, there's, aside from a requirement for lot corner, like how many foundation corners there are, there's certain specific requirements for garage treatments for um, different varying colors throughout the project. There's a two hundred, two hundred foot spacing requirement.
So that was all set up?
For example, within a certain proximity.
Yeah, within two hundred feet.
And when this initially went through the city, all of that was presented as far as your, your design plans, your colors, your, your.
Yeah, and that's all staying.
None of that's changed.
And that's something that, um, don't mean interrupt, just add to.
Appreciate it.
Uh, Fieldstone was not involved in the development of those standards and guidelines. So as a buyer of the project, they basically just inherited that. And we've worked with them since they started building there, just to make sure that what they build measures that.
It's a struggle. It's probably, it's one of our most complicated, which is good because it limits the proximity of similar homes.
Meaning what? Why is that? How is that a struggle?
Well, in most communities that we build in, our redundancy requirements are we don't build the same home right next to or right across the street. And so you could have the same home, kitty corner, or every other home, yeah.
And this one's how far?
Two hundred feet.
Two hundred feet.
Which is intended to keep it.
So when you say, when you say the same home, are you saying the same floor plan?
Same floor plan.
Color scheme?
Just depends on the buyer. Same color scheme and floor plan would not be allowed within the two hundred feet, but.
But you could do the same floor plan in a different color within? No, so floor plan and color.
And oftentimes they'll do a different style roof. Um, a lot of the floor plans, frankly, are really similar. So it's more a matter of changing the front facade maybe, uh, doing a porch a little bit differently. Um, you know, oftentimes it's roof lines that we see, different materials, um, things that probably make the homes look more different than they really are inside. I'm guessing, again, I'm guessing the actual way that the floor plans are laid out.
You know how many total floor plans are in this development?
I've.
Estimate?
Um, so we have two different, we have two different lines of product because there are larger lots on the east side. Um, in the large lot side of things, we, we have, I can't, you wouldn't be able to quote me because I don't work on our building side too much, but, and there's around ten to fifteen that we use in the large lot area. And then in the rest of the project, there's, we still use those large plans if they fit on a lot. And so it, it goes from probably fifteen to about twenty different plans. But it all just depends on what buyers want though, right? So.
Could, could you give us an example of the type of homes that are going to be built in this particular development, uh, that are close in this area? There, I know you have a development already east.
If you go back to the first project, or to the first page of this, and it sounds like maybe you guys were out there?
Yeah.
So everything in gray, as was asked and mentioned, is either approved or built. We are built, we're building on this road right now. So this phase right here is approved but not built yet. And there's a phase up here that's not built. All of these homes um, in this area, and then everything on this side, including, no, everything on this side of the power corridor is what we've built. The homes that we continue to build will be the same style and same.
So they're going to be the same style and uh, the, all of the rest of the homes will look basically like that. So ten to twenty variations in seven hundred and fifty homes, we're going to see the same ones quite often in this development?
Yeah, and that's fairly typical of these days of any development, but unless it's large half acre, acre custom lot areas that you'd be familiar with.
So just a quick question and just.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering, because I was looking at a little color photo here. The two parks are, the two open spaces, are those going to be completed? And then it looks like you've connected them. Is it going to be connected so that you could travel between the two over the parkway or?
Yeah, and that's from the original approval and we're not changing anything there except for, um, as I mentioned, pedestrian, some improvements to the actual roadway that allow for pedestrian crossing, better pedestrian crossing. This park is the next park that will be, or the first park really, that will be improved. And then we have, um, we've paved the trail behind these homes and we've put in the fence along this side and we'll be completing the landscaping there. And then as we do this phase, we'll do that as well. Part of the, the amended development agreement, some of the other things that are happening that I, I don't tie to this approval that we're working with would be, you know, some of the things that staff and Fieldstone are looking at to improve the power line corridor and responsibilities and timing for parks. But yeah, it's, this should be done very soon. Um, within, I, it should be within a few months, could be up to six months, just depending on where we land. But this will tie together and then these two parks will also be developed.
Which, which school would all these, which elementary would these fall under? Is this Reeves?
Possibly.
Any idea?
You guys know about it, honestly?
For elementary school, it's Reeves.
Where do any of these kids go on the other side of the tracks and they go to elementary school?
Um, some people I know live around here and they walk to Reeves. About, not there.
I don't know. I know that June, Nebo School District was at our neighborhood meeting.
Were they? Okay.
And I tried to get out of them, any information on the junior high, and he was very tight-lipped.
Uh, Dave, for clarification, uh, will we be making the final approval on this or will the city council?
Because this is a master plan development and we look at it as a, the plat and the agreement really are part and parcel. They're buried together and the council has to approve that agreement. They'll just be making a recommendation.
Okay.
As planning commission or will the planning commission see what the townhome designs are going to be?
Yes, so, and Mr. Young, tell me if you understand anything differently, but we've particularly kind of changed from uh, some of the things that have been shown to date just by identifying a number of units that can be included in the two different parts of the townhome project, um, with the idea that the applicant would be bringing very specific plans back in, the level of detail, uh, what we'll see with the Meadow Creek Ridge project tonight, uh, actual building designs, landscape plans, a complete site plan that shows everything, including, you know, guest parking and any amenities that they include. And that'll just go through the regular approval process like other townhome projects do, whenever they're ready to go through that.
Uh, one other question I have is, is that we discussed some last night about amenities in the neighborhood such as trees in the planter strips. Is this a development that would, uh, that would be a likely candidate for that? And would the city be participating in that if that goes forward?
No, I was trying to think of another project that we have in town today, a single family uh, project where street trees are required, and I don't think we have another one. But in this project, street trees and a certain landscaping um, requirement has to be met with every home that's built. So it's covered here and this is the only project that we have right now in town where that's the case.
One other question about, uh, some of the things we talked about, uh, is there are a lot of corners in this subdivision and so there's going to be a lot of homes that are going to be seen from two sides of the street, or two streets, I should say. So two sides of the building will be, will be seen. Uh, is that being taken into consideration when, uh, the design of those homes are done so that, uh, so that that home is broken up and has more curb appeal, so to speak?
Um, we, we don't do anything custom to a corner home, uh, to answer that, that question. Um, but one thing that we do do in this community that you won't see in a lot of the other communities and part of the design guidelines is upgraded materials on all sides of the home. Um, I know just driving around before I came here and I've, I've driven around up out here many times, with the Salisbury project to the, the south of us, they've, is a lot of stucco, right? We do, we have, we're full hardy on all of these homes, um, which we see as a significant upgrade, so.
So all of these homes are hardy? There's no stucco on these homes?
I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure. Again, I do the land side, but I'm, I mean, I've driven through there so many times and I don't believe there's any stucco on our homes.
I think the use of hardy is one way to, to fulfill some requirements that we have in the design guidelines. I think you can use stucco, but that would require a designer or builder to make other enhancements on a building.
Yeah, basically what, what John's saying is we're trying to get away from, on city streets.
Yeah.
In a corner having a, a big huge wall.
Just a flash.
A movie screen.
Yeah.
It's just stucco and no windows. Are there any of those then in your development that you're aware of?
Um, well, like I said, not, not just stucco, I'm sure of. And, I mean, I'd have to drive around and look at, because again, it would all just depend on the home that a buyer picked for that corner lot. I know in driving through just now, I know I noticed, like on this corner, that lot is a rambler, um, which most of the homes on that other street are all two stories, so I know that, that breaks it up, but I don't know treatment on that side and I don't know.
In driving around, did you happen to go through Fieldstone's development that's just southwest of here?
I did not. And I've, I've heard plenty about that project from Chris Thompson. Yeah. We've changed a lot of things that we've, that we do from those days. Um, and a lot of that comes from learning from that project and a project in Lehigh. I've been with Fieldstone for three years, so I'm happy to say that was well before I was involved. But I, but I have heard from multiple staff members how they feel about that project. So we, we don't believe that, well, our projects today, any of our projects today will have that kind of a stigma anywhere.
We, we liked the homes that we saw when we drilled through it.
I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Yep, the trees too, was, I, it was noticeable, so.
Makes a difference.
And the, the, using the different products on all four sides of the home, I think that kind of takes care of John's, Commissioner Menon Hall's concern with that.
Well, in the design guidelines that Dave mentioned that we inherited, right? They take, they address most of that. And that's, that's the reason that you see what you do see in both landscaping and the homes. We did, when we came into the project, we did modify al- almost every home plan in that, that we were going to offer in this community because of those design guidelines. We changed, we added popouts, um, we had to increase the, the number of corners that we have on our foundations. And that changed the layouts and the floor plans of almost every one of our home plans. So you, you, you do see, yeah, it is good. I don't disagree.
That, that's why those were put there.
Yeah.
Okay, commissioners, uh, lots of good comments and questions. Is there anything else we need to discuss or?
I have one more question. What is the price range of the homes? That, you've got some larger lots that of course are going to be more and the smaller lots?
Yeah.
Give us a, an idea.
Yeah, you're asking the land guy again about the cost of the homes. Um, so Frank, I don't know that answer, but I do know that we start, our starting price is in the high three hundreds um, on any home in there. But then on our larger lots, those homes are bigger square footage, third car garage usually, and I don't know how high those go up, but my guess is they're probably in the high four hundreds. I don't know that anything's over five hundred in this community in Spanish Fork right now, but I could be wrong.
Okay.
I guess one more question.
Commissioner Menon Hall, you only get.
I, I have one more question.
Get one more.
Where do you live and do you live in a Fieldstone development?
I do not live in a Fieldstone development. I live in Eagle Mountain. I bought my home prior to working for Fieldstone. And.
Spanish Fork's a good place to live.
And I live on a, a larger lot than we build on, so.
Any be, anybody besides Commissioner Menon Hall? That might have a question. Otherwise, uh, I entertain a motion. Again, this is a recommendation uh, to the city council.
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and recommend the Legacy Farm preliminary plat.
Uh, got a motion from Commissioner Tag.
I'll second it.
A second from Commissioner Argal. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you. Looking to you.
Thanks.
So we'll move to the Meadow Creek. Uh, let's see, this is going to be a public hearing eventually, and it's a zone change for a preliminary plat.
Yes, so zone change and an amendment to the preliminary plat to add some land. Um, you might remember that, uh, you reviewed an annexation just a couple of months ago that brought some of what we'll talk about tonight into Spanish Fork City. After that happened, we did a boundary adjustment with Springville that brought the remaining part of what we'll talk about tonight into the city. Subject property um, is not currently zoned all three in, I'm sorry, R3. That's the proposal tonight is to change the zoning from rural residential to R3, um, so that a project with a total of a hundred and fifty-nine townhomes can be built. Um, but with the amended part that we're looking at tonight, there's not entirely that many units included. Um, let's just look at this from kind of the getting our bearings point of view. This image doesn't show, for example, uh, Spanish Fork Parkway, which is now built over here. Uh, so subject property is just, um, I'm gonna say just due east of the intersection of Spanish Fork Parkway and State Road 51. Spanish Fork Parkway will eventually run south of this project and land at the city purchased several years ago and cross the railroad tracks and then go through what we were just looking at, Legacy Farms. Um, again, uh, this part that came into the city and this map is not entirely accurate. Um, the part that was, was annexed to the city was not zoned R3, but was zoned rural residential. So we're really talking about changing the zoning on all of what we see there to R3. Um, talked about a number of different, different issues with the applicant and um, I think there are a couple of different ways potentially to look at what's before you tonight. In my view, really, we're looking at amending the overall approval of the Meadow Creek Ridge project. So this project was originally approved. Um, I'm just going to jump way ahead now, kind of get to the meat of it. Um, this is the part of the development that was in the original approval. This is what the applicants would like to add to it. And we've had discussions before with the planning commission about that prospect of, of expanding their project. Um, it's advantageous to them um, to have this develop in Spanish Fork because we have utilities, we can serve it. Springville likely won't have the ability to provide services to this property for maybe decades to come, for a very, very long time into the future. Um, and we felt that townhomes are an appropriate use for this site, um, for a variety of different reasons. Um, it is a challenging site, um, I think to design a project for, for a few different reasons. Um, and I view, you know, what we're talking about tonight really is just an amendment of the overall project. Um, to be very clear, I really appreciate the applicant's willingness to work with staff. Over the course of the past several months, we've kind of been in a bit of a, a dead time because there wasn't anything that, that we could do as the city to act on approving a change to this project until all the land was in Spanish Fork. It just got wrapped up last month, so this is our first opportunity to move forward now with this. And the applicant, again, they've been good to work with us, um, made several adjustments to the project to improve its design and to talk about a couple of those. Um, I don't know how clear this is going to be, but maybe just looking at what we're calling Road D right here, for example, um, you'll see that relatively narrow alley, uh, which is a little bit different than the previous designs that we saw. Uh, so that would be employed here and over here and here, along with Road H. Um, truly a roadway devoid of space for parking, uh, just simply a way for people to access their garages. Um, and what that's done for us is. Um, and what that's done for us is it's given us the ability to really showcase, um, oh, we don't have the best image, um, the fronts of buildings. Uh, this being the backside, actually, sorry, this is the, the front side of a front-loaded product that the applicants have proposed to build. Um, darn it, you can see from what we're including image-wise, but we've been worried about. Sure, the corners, so yeah, we have it in scissors.
He can hook us up.
Um, but, uh, we're really hoping
Mr. Google.
to improve, uh, the streetscape of these projects by getting the fronts of the homes, the fronts of townhome units, particularly where it's a rearload kind of a product, which is different from that.
Yeah.
Um, front and center to where that's what you see when you go through a project, um, on the streets in a, in a development. Um, be a good time maybe just to, to relax and let Mike pull this up. I think it's important to, to see and to talk about.
Yes, because there was a project further to the south that we had concerns with this particular issue, right?
From a couple of different perspectives, how the roadways are designed there, so people end up parking where you don't want them to park.
Right.
And you end up having the worst side of the buildings.
Yeah.
In the most visible places, and that's really what we're trying to get away from with this by having just simply put the best side, uh,
Facing the street.
In the most prominent locations.
How, how do you address the ones that are on the highway? Where you come in off the highway and then you front-load on the street, but then the back of the house is on the highway?
Um.
Cause looks great from the front, looks good from the side. I'd love to see what looks like in the back.
Okay.
I can't see.
So your concern, uh, Commissioner Oiler is, is from Highway 51, what does them homes look like?
I noticed even as we drove it today and saw some of the existing ones that are gonna be in the same situation where the backs of the homes face highway, face the highway and it, then obviously it's the back of a home, so it's not attractive, but that highway gets driven more than these roads do.
Yes.
People are gonna see it from the highway than they are from the street and the development.
Can you email those locations over to us? Is that one of you? I could forward, I know I have them via email, so we could get those pulled up. Um, maybe just to, to give us a second, so just to put that on hold. I think we do have a rear elevation and we could talk about ways to, to make that more attractive. I think also, uh, Mike, if we can go back to the site plan. We've talked about a couple of different ways to, to deal with the State Road 51 side of things. I think it's best for a variety of reasons to have a wall there, so there will be a six-foot wall.
These are two, these are two-story buildings.
Still would have that. Um, we'll look at the applicant's landscape plan in a second, but having trees there as well. Um,
It doesn't need to stop with that, you know, you could do things on the rears as well to.
Is, is there some views of this stuff that's already been approved of what that would look like from the highway?
Um, yeah, this is, that's a good thing to note for sure. This, nothing's happened yet here, so. In fact, we're hoping to get action on this here in the next couple weeks so they can start work on their first phase.
So, the other thing we talked about, we had a, a training a while back where the guy, I don't remember his name, but he, he talked about trying to find ways to hide the parking. To be able to, basically you've got one road that comes in and then there's a center area and then you've got all the homes built. So they, the parking, the parking and the garages are hidden. How do you do that with, with something like this, or I don't know if it just wasn't thought of? I don't know.
Here.
I would love to see more of that.
There are two different, different townhome plans that are designed into what we're looking at right here. One of them is, we'll go to the, back to the elevations, Mike. We'll go kind of back and forth between the two here for a second, but, uh, so this is, um, the front elevation for a style where you didn't have the garages directly from one of the streets. Um, we call that a front-loaded unit where the garage is on the same side as the front door. Um, the other units are rear-loaded. Now with the front-loaded units, um, all that you can do is try to make the garage doors look less like a blank white sheet.
And is, is what we're seeing here what will actually be built?
Yes.
Does that, I mean, that does have some character, right?
Yeah, I love to look at that.
Different building materials, ridge lines.
In this, you know, again, I think to the applicant's credit and to the builder that they're working with, this is not what we originally saw. Relative to the corners, um, when we go back to the site plan in a minute, you'll see that there are a lot of, a lot of corners that face streets. And they, these guys had the fortunate benefit of getting to a point in the development review process here, a month and a half or two months ago, that synced up with us kind of hitting this crescendo of concern about architecture and corners. And they've had the pleasure of being the ones to deal with that for the first time. So, um, yeah, I appreciate them being willing to work with us. Um, they've seen all of the bad examples that we shared last night with you and the, the city council as we said, hey, we don't wanna see this. And, you know, they responded, uh, with some of the very things that we talked last night about requiring and.
Big difference.
Um, I think it is, and certainly appreciate that. Um, in Clark, SpanishFork.org. UCLA, okay? Yep. Um.
So looking at that view right now and kind of picturing that, can you go back to that site plan?
And this is what you would see from the front on some of the units. You're not hiding that garage, you're not hiding the parking.
Yeah.
You're dressing up the garage doors, which I appreciate, and that does make a difference, but, um.
Uh, no, the site plan. I would, uh.
I think a better way to deal with hiding the parking is units.
So them and.
A rear-load unit to where the garages are in back, and this very clearly.
Those are.
Is just a utilitarian.
So the gra- okay, so the garages in all of these are the back and then the front door.
Exactly, yeah, so you can see.
Yeah, that's what I.
Where there are driveways. It's front-loaded and where there is not a driveway, it's rear-loaded. So you have that combination.
I like that.
What's the minimum width on those, uh, rear-loaded on those roads?
Right now we're at twenty-four feet.
That's the minimum between buildings.
Uh, so you would have closer to thirty-five feet between buildings.
Because you have.
Twenty-four. Right, and then you have the driveway that's only, what do you say, three feet?
Five feet or minus, yeah.
Unless, I just, I've noticed one other place where they've done this and I don't know that I could, I don't know that I could park a truck in there.
I think you're right. And so, again, sometimes I leave out chunks that are helpful, but as we've talked about, the best and worst ways to design these, we have found in town that if you don't have close to twenty-five feet, then you have trucks that are hanging out into places where you don't want trucks. So you either have twenty-five feet or you completely eliminate it altogether. So the people don't even try to park. And we've seen several projects along the Wasatch Front, we have a couple here in town where with no space, it works well. And I think also there's less of a propensity for people to use their garages as storage space and that type of a thing. So this is exactly what.
You're trying to avoid.
From two perspectives, we don't necessarily want to have happen, you know, this is not, this looking elevation.
And these, oh, and these are front.
These are front loads as well. Um, this particular.
Feet or so.
Yeah.
One by last time.
This particular, sure. That's, this is what started the discussion.
It was this.
Yeah.
So, back on the, this one. Are these as close to the sidewalk, as close to the road as, as they can be, the, the fronts of these?
No, so, um, there are a couple of things that I wanted to talk about. We just got this from the applicant's engineer yesterday, eh, which in this case, oftentimes it wouldn't be this case, you know, it's, we're getting things that close to your meeting because an applicant has procrastinated. In this case, the city engineer and I sat down with the applicant and his engineer last Thursday right before the holiday and asked them to make some changes. And they turned that around pretty quick, just got it to us. But I think, for example, um, without having the applicant build any more sidewalk, you know, it might be good in some of these areas to maybe have a park strip included between the sidewalk and the curb so we could get street trees in there in a little different way. Um, and I'd love to have an opportunity to maybe, maybe doing more of like this design here, over here, which for a lot of reasons, the townhomes, we haven't done in the past, but here I think we could do that without any issues. So that at least you'd have that feeling of having that townhome a little bit closer to the street. Is that with this particular kind of a, a design and layout, I think oftentimes we would say is a good thing. Having a little less space there.
So also with these rear-loading, these front ones have obviously extra parking up in front of their home. These ones, you eliminate all of them.
Right.
So, does this plan meet parking requirements with, with these not having that additional park?
So, to be honest with you, I haven't ran the numbers on that yet. Um, but I know that they're close. Uh, uh, the previous submittal that we had, they had more parking than what we typically would require. Now that being said, and we talk about this with, with every builder that's doing townhomes, for whatever reason, we need more parking in Spanish Fork than what people seem to need in other communities. Um, which you see it when you drive down Canyon Road and places like that, and cars are parked on the street next to projects like this. Um, so as we do just a closer look, for example, if the applicants needed to add some guest parking in a few places like this, we've also talked to the applicants about potentially on the north side here of Road C, physically striping parallel parking spaces and doing some different things like that, that I'm very comfortable spatially that there's room.
So if they did that on this road and somebody comes to visit and parks right here, there's still enough space to have a car parked here, a car parked here, and cars get between them.
That's what that's designed for.
Slowly, yes. It's like the roads you drove on in Legacy Farms, narrow, but.
Same, yeah, same.
Intended to slow traffic.
No, you can't do quite the same thing here, right, because it's all driveways.
Yeah.
Uh, but that is part of the beauty of, of some of these streets like we have here where you don't have that interruption, you still have that space on the street for street parking, which, um, which I'd love, you know, I love that idea of being able to pull right up in front of a unit. That's my, my parking spot, that kind of a thing, so. Um, so those in fact are the two things, actually, and there's one other thing related to the landscaping plan, but, um, giving us the staff an opportunity to just to fine-tune guest parking, make sure that's planned for in the right places in the project in the right quantity, and perhaps looking at, at just some tweaks to how the sidewalks and the curbs uh, in a couple of places on the project are designed to see if maybe we could do more of, of this um, in a couple of places. I mentioned the landscaping plan, they've submitted a landscaping plan that meets our criteria, uh, for this part of the project. Um, we still need to see something from overall, but if we just follow that same style and theme throughout the whole thing, we'd be fine. I would just say this, um, you have plenty of trees on what we've looked at here, which I think is the next slide, so maybe if you can go to the landscaping plan just for a quick second. Um, yeah, that one, uh, so.
So that's not the one that we're looking at though?
Yeah, something that we're looking at's right next door. Um, maybe back to the site plan, I might, gonna go, might go back to that. Um, for example, maybe taking some of the trees that are planned for this area in here and putting them on the other side of the road here, just a couple of, of adjustments like that that I'd love to work with the applicant on, I think would be enhancement of the overall design. Um, aside from that, like I said, we've, um, we've pushed the applicants on architecture, I think they've responded well, they've worked with us on the design. Um, aside from working out a few details, I think, uh, the project's ready to move forward.
What type of fencing is there required on this project?
That's a great question as well, so, um, along State Road 51, uh, it is a six-foot masonry wall. Along this roadway here, uh, also it's a six-foot masonry wall. Now, one thing that we've talked with the applicant about, hey, thanks. Uh, and this is reflective of one of the, the changes the applicant made in the last week, including, we call this almost a courtyard kind of a design, where you have fronts of buildings out into an open space like that. We'd love to have some latitude to work with the applicant so that if they wanted, for example, maybe to do a masonry wall to a certain point and a masonry wall to a certain point, maybe do some kind of wrought iron in between just to open up, you know, the visibility into that open space for a lot of different reasons. That oftentimes is a good idea. Um, masonry wall next to the railroad tracks, and we've talked about just a vinyl fence down on, on that north side. And please refresh my memory relative to, I know you have an agreement with this property owner relative to fencing here.
So they agree, we have with them, they say they agree to do a vinyl wall around there. It's, it's looks like a masonry, but it's not like a masonry.
You're familiar with that?
Yep.
And in that application, we would allow that?
So the parking, are these carports covered or is it just open parking?
Open parking. So each of these units here, they still have a two-car garage.
We really just wanna encourage guests to park there, not make more turn.
Right.
So those elevations. Terminal. So this is the front and what, what we don't wanna do is hide this, and that's.
Oh, that's beautiful.
We've had a tendency to do that, so that's where the alley, I think, really becomes helpful, so get cars off of this in different ways, um.
Yeah, that looks great.
Do we want to include that park strip on the other two roads, C and, I don't know what they were?
Over here.
C and E.
I think it's a, it's a, an easy change, you know, you're not, not building anything more, just building it differently.
So is it the same color scheme for all of the buildings, every, every one of these, or is it, there's some variation to the color?
Like gray, right, but wow.
So the question, the question on this, if you're at, is this gonna be available parking for guests that are along the road and tenants?
Yes.
Then definitely we have a sidewalk coming out here, you're gonna have cow paths through there.
I don't know, I don't know if you'd have enough traffic there.
Yeah, that's right, that's just guests, right?
What'd you call it? Cow path?
Cow trail, right.
Sorry, guest pass.
Any elevations from, any rear elevations?
On that, against the highway?
Yeah.
And I knew we'd talk about architecture tonight.
So, so far it's looking really good, I think we'd agree. So we don't have a back version of, of that?
Are, do we know, or maybe they can answer, are there, are there pop outs or any variation to elevation on the rear?
Yeah, I just, I think the, you know, I just said you, uh, was, was sort of older, was busy for one. was busy for one, this, this is correct, on the, on the front elevation of the rear load, the back elevation of the front loads, I don't think I've got that on my phone, but I think you should have a little bit, I just couldn't find it.
Well, I think you should be commended for having a proposal that reflects what we have been trying to accomplish.
Yeah, this is one of the...
It's nice to see something that, you know...
Oh, it is. Yeah, this is one of the best ones that we've seen since I've been on the commission a little over a year. This looks great.
That, that highway view, I think it maybe is the only concern.
Yeah.
Even though you got a six-foot fence, you got a two-story building, and, and if we could have the same, you know, maybe not to that extent surely, but some pop outs and some variations.
Different roof lines or something, yeah.
Knowing what that means to you guys, not to tell you what to do, but how would you feel about the idea, if you're comfortable acting on approving the preliminary plot tonight, that we simply work with the applicant to bring something back to you in some future meeting? It's going to be months and months before they submit plans for a building permit, you know, to just...
Make sure, go go with that.
Review.
And we can word it that way, we can word it that way in the approval.
Yeah, I like that.
So this is a public hearing, right?
On the zone change.
On the zone change. If the commissioner's okay, I'm just going to move into public hearing. We'll go into public hearing now. Is there anybody from the public that would like to comment on this?
I do.
Okay.
I never say anything.
Go ahead and come up and state your name, and glad you're here.
Shelley Jamison. I lived in the townhomes just south of this for seven years, so I kind of know all the problems when I was on the HOA board. The biggest problems were parking, of course, and nobody parks in their garages. And when the snow comes, I'm assuming it's an HOA, is that right?
The streets will be public, so everything we see there will be a public issue.
It'll be clogged by the city.
Yes.
So where does the snow go?
Good question.
When the snow hits? Because that was a huge problem in the townhomes. You'd block driveways, you'd take out five or six spots, we had to, we had to pay someone to come take the snow and dump it somewhere else, thousands of dollars. So, just a suggestion that you need more parking than you ever think possible, because if you push the snow into some spot, I don't know what the city does, but where are you going to put all the snow on all these roads? And then you take up all the spots, and then there's no spots left. So, just a suggestion, because it was a nightmare looking at it.
Good, good observations.
Thank you, Shelley. Any other comments from the public? Dave, do you want to address any of those comments from Shelley that might be different, knowing that project to the south where she lives?
I think Mike's the one that's been grilling us about space for storing snow. I, I think that's absolutely a valid issue. Frankly, it's one that I tend to probably downplay more than I should. All that I can think of is, there's guest parking that gets built, you know, with the assumption that at different times of the year, that's where you push snow. I don't know how else necessarily to plan for it, so maybe even going beyond with additional guest parking to provide that space. I will say this, the roads here, even as narrow as they are, they are different than what exists in Whispering Willow just to the south. I'm not sure that they have a lot more room for snow, but having things like park strips, in my neighborhood, that's where snow ends up, and that kind of a thing too as well. So, I think just some of those design differences probably help with that issue a little bit.
Can snow be pushed or piled up in landscaped areas?
You bet, yeah.
Or does that, or does that do damage to the landscaped area, the grass?
It's soluble, and then we can pass it down, but there's still, we have a part, we have to put handles down to offset the salt every year. We solve all the sidewalks with our cleaning, so.
Just wondering, like, with these roads, if you've got a plow...
Excuse me, let me get the applicant just to come up and speak in the microphone. I'm getting signs held up in the back.
Thousands of people on YouTube watching this.
Want to hear your voice.
With these two roads, if you've got a plow that's coming down here, I don't know how he's going to turn around to be able to then push the snow back this way. I don't know how that works.
Yeah, no, that, that's a valid point. I think they push the snow down, they'll just push it out into the landscaped area here, and, and if it's a, it's usually a smaller pickup type truck that went back into the driveway, and then go back and push it again down on this end here. I think for the most part, these roads, I believe, they're about five and a half feet wider than the project to the south on the main corridors here. So these main circular roads here that, that move the traffic are about five and a half feet more width of asphalt, so that gives some space right there as well. You know, we, we, we need to look at that some more, I, I agree, I think those details ought to be addressed. There, there's, there's areas where they can come and push the snow, you know, push it over into this area, because they're coming back instead of pushing it out on the road. I, I, I like the way this lays out, I love the, the streetscape when you come in here, you know, you've got a nice, you got, you pass two nice parks, you get the, the elevation of these, these homes here that, that we saw on, on the other side, on that previous I don't have all the answers, but I know we put a lot of time and effort into this, and I think the staff's been great, they've given us great suggestions, we've liked a lot of the things they've shared with us that have helped get it to this point. This won't feel like a normal townhome project. I don't like going into townhome projects where you can't find a place to park, and there's cars lining up on both sides, it's really, it's kind of annoying basically, if you're trying to visit somebody, and I, so when they came back and asked us to make these roads wider, and indicated the need for that, as we analyzed that, it made sense, there's costs associated with that, but it made sense to do that. So, we want to make it a nice project, so that the cells are there, right? We can't, if we don't sell the product, we can't, can't make money and move on to the next one, so we want to make sure that the streetscape's good, and the, the field feels great, and it feels more open. There's all, over thirty percent of the project is open space, is green space, which, you know, is pretty significant compared to a lot of the projects, they're in the ten, fifteen percent range. So, we, we, we think that's a good plus. These power lines are kind of a challenge to try to work around, but this is going to be a pet park, and we think that, we aren't going to plant a lot of trees under these power lines, because the power company kind of restricts that, but it's a great place for pets and throw them frisbees and things like that. This can have more greenery over here, more trees here and here. I know I'm kind of dancing issue on the snow thing, because I really don't have all the answers for that, but I'm trying to point out some of the perks and the pluses that we've got here, and I think it's going to be a nice project.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'd like to visit a little bit more about parking, so that's one of my first concerns looking at it, because you've got quite a bit over here for these homes that are garage to rear load, I believe, but over here in this new part, there's just nothing in here. So I know Dave mentioned maybe here and here, and here, and here, and you just, so if your residents don't have anywhere to park in a driveway with all of these units, they're going to end up parking somewhere, and then guests are going to be somewhere, so I just, that's one of the things I'd like to have addressed more.
No, I agree, and I think we can, we can fit some strategic parking style, which didn't want to take away too much of the green space, but we can certainly add some parking on both ends here without any problem at all. The roads here are wide enough to accommodate parking on one side, up and down, not, not, I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend parking on both sides. I like Dave's idea of just, you know, eventually striping where we think they ought to park, so it's implied that that's where you go to park your car, and...
Sure.
And, but there are areas we can add more parking for sure, and we're not opposed to doing that, you know.
And I've got a solution.
I introduce you to Don Forbus here.
How are you doing?
Yes.
On the, underneath the power lines there, just to the left of the project, where's your...
It's right there.
Okay. Okay, right there, that is under the power lines, and we're not, and I own that property there, my trust owns that property there. That'd be a great place to park cars. We can't build any buildings there, or it could be turned into a green area where you can push your snow, but right now, the project doesn't own that property, we'd like to sell it to them. That's my two cents, well.
Thank you.
Um, Dave, with on-street parking being kind of the, you know, place for people to park, I know that during the snow removal time of year, we're asked not to park on the roads, so the same site during that timeframe, it wouldn't be of any value to have, to say we have that type of parking available, right?
That's a good point. So as we run the numbers...
I think you should do it during the winter months, not the summer months.
Um, yes. And when I say run the numbers, not actually maybe going out and physically counting what's available, but just looking at, which is, we probably should do that at some point in time, just to kind of do our own parking study in town and see, maybe a little bit more closely what really seems to be needed, but I think just simply making sure that there are two and a half parking spaces at least available for every unit, maybe not accounting for, you know, any of the on-street parking, which is how our code reads, it has to be off-street. And frankly, just in looking at what they have now, I'm guessing that numbers-wise, they have that, they have two and a half included in the project, so then it's more of an issue, as has been touched on, of just proximity to units, so that it's, you know, some practical location where people are actually going to use it. And I also have to say this, particularly when it comes to off-street parking, again, sometimes I feel like I'm talking out of both sides of my mouth. You know, in some ways, if you have too much on-street parking, you just end up with storage, and other things happen on those spaces that we don't necessarily want, so certainly want to make sure that there's an adequate supply of parking, but not necessarily more than what really gets used on a daily basis, or that ends up getting used differently. I don't know if that has ever been an issue, or was an issue with your HOA, but I know sometimes that's a challenge for HOAs.
The Redfield Road was a nightmare, and we were always worried about children going run over, and there was a bus stop, and we asked to have the bus stop moved, because we were worried kids across the street could see them, and it was a nightmare.
But you didn't have problems with people just parking vehicles and leaving them there for weeks on end?
We did, and we charged out to go through, and because it was private roads, and it wasn't Spanish Fork, we had them towed all the time. People loved cars there, if they were not registered, you would have them tagged and towed, and people with the RVs, and...
Yeah.
So...
That's an issue.
Yep. Yeah, applicants would love to talk to you about a place for storing vehicles and things like that as well, but maybe we can do that another night.
My name is Lynn Randliss Walker. We, Kim might not have known, because we have a lot of stuff going on at our office all the time, but we talked about this snow before. You know, this was, our plan was to come down and push that snow into here, and same with that one, and this one here, that would give it, you know, that'd take out visiting parking, visitor parking, but that could hold, that can hold a lot of snow right there, those three. And, you know, the same down here, this can be pushed on the side here, or at the end here, or it might end up, if it's a bad snowstorm, end up taking some of this. This road here, if you go up and down, you could throw it all into here. The real problem is this right here, if it's rear loaded garages, this whole street's really got to be cleared, really completely, because people won't be able to back out if there's snow, a foot of snow there, and, so they'll just have to clean that really good, and that's kind of the same issue here on those rear loads.
And just to confirm this, every one of these roads we're seeing are city roads, and they will need to be pushed the snow?
That's the idea, yes.
What is, I guess, some dialogues, I mean, through the different departments have talked about this?
Um, yeah, there are kind of two things that have happened, for example, since Whispering Willow got approved. City took a position several years ago that we didn't want to have any more private streets, and I think as much as anything, that is out of a concern for people that buy townhomes and HOA projects, and just feeling like they shouldn't have to, to pay for their street maintenance when nobody else in the community is, or you know, when, when other, when people in other neighborhoods at least aren't. So there's that, that equity issue that I think is probably the biggest reason that we've, we've really taken a pretty firm stand on not wanting more private streets, and out of that has come some different street design options to serve projects like this.
Do we have projects currently that the city is maintaining like this? Or will this be a first?
I think we're taking care of all of the Maple Mountain townhomes, the ones that are just south of Sierra Bonita, I think those are public streets.
Public? Well, that would be an example, got to be comparable to this, then?
That's the first one that comes to mind. Parky Townhomes, that's a combination of public streets and what we just called driveways, so we're taking care of all of the maintenance on the public street part of that, not the driveways. And frankly, if we would have talked when that project was approved about kind of an alley option, that probably would have been designed a little bit differently, and, and some of that might be public streets. The concept of having an alley be a public street, that's not something that you see commonly done in communities. South Jordan did it, they did it first with Daybreak, that project there, where you have a lot of the rear load, different kind of housing product, whether it's a single-family detached home, or, or something like what we're looking at tonight. And from day one, the city's taking care of the alleys, they've done all of the road maintenance, as well as snow removal and different things like that, and it was largely because of feedback that we got from them. It was pretty positive on how it's worked, that we felt comfortable talking to the applicant about this kind of a design now. The alleys that they have in Daybreak are a few feet narrower than what we're talking about here, so I guess you could say we're not entirely ready to jump in with both feet to do exactly what they did there, but we still probably would be in the minority of , of communities that would care for alleys like what we're talking about tonight.
Okay.
Dave, a question on access, is two accesses enough for this project? That's, I think I can see it here. Is that enough with, what do we have, one hundred and fifty-nine townhomes, two vehicles apiece? A lot of vehicles coming and going, is that going to be adequate according to our...
Um, you know, just off the cuff, I would say numerically, yes. And if there's any deficiency that we have in access, it's a matter of should we have any kind of connection, you know, to property over here? There really, there's not an opportunity to make another street connection here, because the proximity to what's going to be a lighted intersection here, so really, there's this location, or maybe some other place along here, to where you could have just one point of access out onto the state highway, so then this access out here, obviously that's the only other one. In the future, having maybe some other connection over here, and this design wouldn't necessarily preclude that from happening in the future, which might be to the benefit of both this project and something else if it were to happen here. This is Springville, so that's another wrinkle, just relative to, you know, communities coming together to plan for streets and that sort of a thing. A hundred and fifty-nine units split between two accesses. Love connectivity of streets, we'd love to have more.
Any reason why you don't drop this building, do an access here, add an additional building here, and move parking over there?
I don't think UDOT would allow that. I think they're going to require more separation, yeah.
Yeah, I've met with UDOT, and, right there in Orem, and not, probably five, six times about this project, and we just hammered all the way across that Highway 51 where we could have accesses, and it's very limited, depending where we can go, because of other driveways across the street on existing homes, and there has to be so much distance, they've got all these rules, and that's really was the best thing we could come up with then. And now, now this has been two to three years ago, but it really, it stayed the same, and UDOT knows all about this still, is we have to have permits to, you know, to get the access, and then permits to construct with, so. and then permits to construct with, so.
Okay. Thank you, Lynn. No other comments from the public, we'll move out of our public hearing portion of this. Had a lot of questions, good comments. Is the commission, commissioners ready to act on this, or what's your feeling?
I'd like to just suggest things that should be added as part of the motion, potentially. We could. We've talked about parking requirements being met or being adequate. That ought to be part of what our motion includes. We also talked about sidewalk curb and gutter being more defined in certain areas. I think it'd be good to have that more defined, or it's defined by the time it gets to the next step. Also talking about masonry walls. I'm not sure if those are already included. Are they already included? Okay, so we don't need to...
They are.
Okay. And then, something else that I don't know if we got any detail on, is what the parks are going to look like. Are there's going to be big, empty, grassy areas, or are they going to have lots of trees and shrubs? I'm not sure what was included on that.
And, yeah, any, excuse me, any playground equipment or anything in the parks that you've got planned?
Can you, can you come up to the mic for us? Thank you.
Yeah. The tot lot up on the right there will have a playground in it. The pet park down here, we can't put any structures underneath the power line, just for maintenance purposes. There could be something come along. We thought maybe a pergola or two along the pathway there. You know, as far as, as far as any other amenities, that would probably be it on this project here. As, you know, but the tot lot certainly could accommodate a playground, and that's what the intent was.
Great. I don't know if we should ask for more detail, be there or not conditions, but that was just one of the thoughts in the mail. So talk about street striping. I don't know if we ought to require that to be part of it, or it's, maybe they do it someday, or what your thoughts are. But I really like the idea of helping people know that this side of the street, park here, it's striped. Their side, leave open for people to travel through. So those are some of the notes I took as we were going.
No, I think if it's something we want in the development, it's good to specify now, and not just kind of leave it up to them trying to remember what we wanted them to do.
Yep. We've got the other comment that Dave possibly recommended of our concern over the view of highway, from the highway, and leaving it up to them to come up with some drawings eventually for us to see. So as someone prepares to make a motion for this, if we go there, then I agree we need to make these points. Again, this will be recommendations to the city council. We can add those, we can add those as conditions. This is two parts. This is a zone change and a preliminary plat approval. I imagine we could do it at the same time, couldn't we, Dave? Yeah.
I will make a motion that we recommend that the zone change be approved, and pass that on to the city council, and that we approve the preliminary plat as presented, with the amendments and changes that may come from staff and DRC.
Would, would any of the commissioners want to add to those points, to that motion?
Did you get noted the conditions or the points that Commissioner Argyle, maybe just include those as well as part of the, part of the motion? I second that.
Okay. Got a motion from Commissioner Mandon Hall, a second from Commissioner Euler. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Be a great development.
Yeah.
Thanks for your time. I move that we take a five-minute recess.
I'll second that.
And the last item on our agenda is Title 15 amendments. We'll have Mr. Anderson go over those with us, and then we'll have a public hearing for a portion of that before we have a motion.
We have two different parts of changes to Title 15. Some are coming from our engineering office. I have some to talk about from our office. And frankly, I'm not sure that these are entirely ready, but I wanted to run them by you tonight. So we'll start with engineering.
All right. And I helped do one of these. And then I wrote the summaries for Junior. So I apologize if I don't quite exactly know what all these are, but... Assembly 96 mandated how water conveyance facilities are to be dealt with, and the development affects those facilities. The section clarifies that developers are to work with the irrigation company according to that. Then for the city, a certificate of compliance for any approval can be given. So basically what happens is a developer goes in, there's a ditch alongside or through his development, and he says, "I want to develop this." And we say, "Okay, go talk to the irrigation district." And they go talk. They usually don't get along, if you could imagine that. And then they always come back to us and say, "You make them do this. You do the, they're holding up progress. You go fix this." You know what I mean? So it puts us in a spot, and frankly, I don't think we should be in that spot, between a private developer and a private irrigation ditch. Assembly 96 basically says cities don't need to be involved other than, as it says, we require them to give us a certificate saying they worked it out, and here's what is going to happen. And then there's certain rules within Assembly 96 of how those two are supposed to work together, mediation. They go to the state ombudsman, and they work it out. This just clarifies what's our role, and what do we expect out of that negotiation between the two of them. We do still have a role as far as health and safety and things. They can't agree on something that then we don't like, or would be a health issue. So that's what that one does. Again, this isn't all of our, which this is just the little summary of it. But there's the big piece that Junior wrote. This one is, let's see, we do connectors agreements, or pioneering agreements. If someone at the end of a road wants to develop, but the place in between where existing utilities are on that house is undeveloped, they can go in and put the pipe in, and then say, "All right, those lots, when they develop, need to pay me back." And that goes for 30 years. We have them happen all the time. Seems like something I frequently do. This just says it's not a lien, it's a notice. I think it's more of a formality. I don't know much more about the lien versus notice, Dave, unless you do.
What's, what's the, if you don't have a lien, if you, if you can't lien the property, what teeth do you have?
They can't develop. We want to prove the development.
Okay. It's the same as with the, with the prior one. I think the city's been requiring the, the agreement between the canal company or the irrigation district and the developer anyway, haven't you, for some time now?
Some kind of acknowledgement.
Some acknowledgement, that's...
Some agno, because...
The developer is going to pipe, or allow the piping, or pipe for the most part.
Yes.
Or at least assure the irrigation company that the water flow that historically has been going through.
Got a portable microphone, or no?
No. Well, I don't know, do we?
You were done anyway.
Just say no and walk.
I don't have...
After the laughing.
No. So basically what that, you're right, John. I mean, basically, it's an assurance between the developer and, or at least an agreement to begin. And if there can't be an agreement, like was mentioned, they can go to the state ombudsman's office to get that resolved.
Right.
The city itself, we had been somewhat involved. It put us in an awkward position most of the time. And so nowadays, because of this bill, we were, we are able to kind of stand back. So we just wait, and once there's some sort of an agreement between the two, or recommendation from the ombudsman's office, then we can proceed. But otherwise, we do not approve until it's done.
I actually think that's a good move, because that involves only two parties, or the ombudsman, you know, that's going to resolve the issue if there's a serious disagreement. When there were three, it gave an opportunity for all the sides to kind of, to beat up on one. If I don't like the answer from you, I'm going to go to the other guy.
So ironically enough.
So I actually like it better in this way, that, that that can be resolved between the two entities who are being affected. The guy that's having to move the ditch, and the guy that needs it moved. And those are the ones that should be doing it all along. So I, I think it's a good move on that part, and let the city just have the certificate that says that it's been done. I like it.
So prior to this passing, we met with a developer four times, and met with the irrigation district twice in three weeks, three, four weeks, as the mediator, because they couldn't get along. So they come to us, "Well, they said this, and he said this," and it was an exact thing. And the irrigation district, most of the developers, we don't know, but a lot of the irrigation district people, we do know. And so then there's a, it just creates conflict.
You don't like being a referee?
I already do it enough with just a developer and me, let alone having a third party, so.
Yeah.
All right. So the connectors agreement, real quick, this is a, let's see if this will work, quick exam. All right. Do you have another? Thanks. This is an existing water line that deadens right here. There's a gentleman that wants to put a house in, and he's opted to bring the water line down, without getting too much into the details. And so he's going to do a connectors agreement, so when these properties develop, they'll pay their portion of half the pipe for their portion of the frontage. So if it's 100 feet, and the toll, you know, length is 1,000 feet, they pay half of that 100 feet, because the other side of the road would pay the other half of that 100 feet.
Yeah, okay.
So. They pay based on what he, he paid. What he paid. The time he put in, not on what it would have cost at the time that they... Yep. So 30 years ago, it might have cost him 6,000 bucks, and that's all you'd have to repay.
Good, good deal for the person.
Waitens.
Yeah.
But you got water at your house. That's kind of nice.
And with good, with this one, I mean, it's not going to be very long before this goes as well with the lift station going in, but you're right.
Yeah, it won't be 30 years.
Okay.
So that's, in that section, it just says it's changing it from a notice to a lien, or from a lien to a notice, excuse me. Yeah. The section, this section clarifies more on what takes place when there's a water transfer. So when people buy, or they develop a property, they either need to turn in, they turn in all the water. Marla knows more about this water transfer than I do, but is that right?
We do require all water to be transferred on a development. They can no longer buy the water shares from the city.
How long have we been doing that?
This was just changed in city council, July.
So prior to that, developers could buy water?
Yes. It, it's changed a couple times over the last 20 years, but for the most part, we've always allowed them to be able to have the option of purchasing the water from the city.
Do you know why we're changing?
We just feel that we're to the point that we need additional water rights. And there's usually a lot of water rights that are left on properties that aren't turned over to the city. And so this is just a good way for the city to get all of the water rights, and then they don't get split between all of the lot owners. You know, we have, we have a lot of areas that the strawberry water stays attached to the property. It's never transferred over to the city for use. And then all of those lots, you know, it's a big parcel of ground, and it's all these lots, they end up with a very small portion of strawberry water. They receive assessments on that they will never be able to use the water that, you know, that's there on the property. This is just a good way to clean it up and get all those water rights transferred to the city.
Can the city use those rights if they're purchasing from the, the owner who can't use them?
Yes, we can.
I assume there's a reason the city buys them.
Yes.
In the pressurization system.
Is it safe to say still that Spanish Fork City has a lot of water available? So for example, we, in recent years, we've met with, with potential industrial operators. And one of the things that we've been able to dangle in front of them as a carrot is that we have water in Spanish Fork that's available, you know, unlike some other communities and that type of a thing. That hasn't necessarily changed, though, right?
No.
To where we have...
That, that's the reason for needing...
Is to try to maintain that.
What, yeah.
Okay.
The developer needs to bring the water to cover their development, to allow what water Spanish Fork does have to be used in other places where it will be needed. The other thing is, is that a lot of Spanish Fork's rights are in wells. And it's been determined that the underground aquifer has been over-appropriated at least by 200 percent. So if everybody exercises their well right in Utah County, we have less than 50 percent of the water available in the aquifer to satisfy the rights. So the more you can leave the water in the ground, the better off you are. And Spanish Fork has been excellent. Chris Thompson has been excellent in trying to move away from the underground sources and utilizing the surface rights that you have in the river and in the strawberry water. And there, if you think about it, where most of your development is taking place, that ground is covered by some sort of water right now, whether it's strawberry, river, or another source. And so that water can be brought in and will be brought in in almost all circumstances, with the exception of a few places. And even your areas on the west side and stuff that may be industrial and stuff, they still have water rights that will be brought in. But you don't want to, you don't want to live on the money in your wallet. You'd like to have a little in the bank. And I think that that's a very wise thing for the city to do, is to make sure that you've got enough in that bank to take care of whatever you need, and bring the water in that's available on the land. The water's extremely valuable. And so if you can withhold the water and sell that separate from your ground, you're going to make a lot more money again.
The other tricky part to add to that, just for education, is that each of the water rights has to be shown to have beneficial use, or else you can lose them. If you want to think of that, you have to re, kind of renew the water right. And so if you have too much, then they start saying, "You're not using that water." You have to give it back, per se. You can't actively use that. And so it's a tricky balance of you can't have too much, but you can't, you always have to make sure you have enough. And so, again, to Chris's credit, that's something that he's pioneered, for sure.
He's doing a great job that way.
Okay.
There you go. All right. Let's see. Just basically lays out how we do developments, when they, they have to bond for their public improvements. If it's a street, a water line, a sewer line, et cetera. And they do it through these formats, and that's what this addition is, just clarifying what formats they can do it in. Cash, your vocal letter of credit, escrow bond, different methods of financing that then we can have a surety that the improvements that have public impact will be completed. And then for that last year, we retain 10 percent of the overall bond. So if something fails, water line fails, a sidewalk fails, we have the cash. If they don't fix it, we can go have a surety that will be fixed. So within a year of the development being finally completed, that we have a, a warranted product essentially for that year, and we can feel good about going forward and giving that 10 percent back.
Yeah, that's good.
The, this section just defines when development may be entered into the one-year warranty. There's certain steps and criteria they have to meet in order to, for us to say, "All right, you're ready to start your one-year warranty." Some of them wait forever to get a punch list item done. They don't put up the wall, or they don't stain the wall, or they, and they just leave it for a long time. And we hold their money, but they just don't seem to get it done. And so some of our projects have, they go three years with the project done without being entered into that one-year warranty, just how they do things. So this, it just clarifies when they can be entered into the one-year warranty. That helps us on our end help police it and keep our file straight, and be more specific to them of when and how they can get to that one-year warranty. This is an issue we've had, that this will help us out a lot. When developers put in landscaping, they think that when they enter into the one-year warranty, that they can then wash their hands and walk away from the landscaping, and then we're supposed to maintain it. The issue is, is sometimes we have trees that die, or landscaping that dies, or sprinkling system that was just haphazardly thrown in the ground, that then Bart and our Parks Department have to jump in and fix at our own expense essentially, because legally, did you break it, or did we break it? Was that your bad that killed the tree, or was it our bad that killed the tree? And so this says during that one-year warranty, until they're out of it, they're... And so this says during that one-year warranty, until they're out of it, they're in charge of maintaining it. We feel that the landscaping company they hire will also be the ones that will maintain it. And if that's the case, I think we'll get a better product because they feel like, ah, we actually have to maintain this for a year. Let's, let's make sure we do our homework. We buy better materials. We put it in better. It's, um, just an overall better product. So. And it clarifies, cause right now we didn't really know, some products or some subdivisions Bart was doing, some the developer was kind of doing. Some of it would die because no one was doing it. This helps Bart know when he's supposed to do it and when the developer's supposed to.
Yep.
That one will be awesome. I'm excited about that. So is Bart. Um, site triangles. So when you pull up to a corner, sometimes you have power boxes or trees or other things, walls that get in the way. Um, we did research on a lot of similar, these sized communities. Um, St. George's Draper, South Jordan and Provo and figure, tried to see, is their site triangle the same size as ours? Do we wanna change it? And the recommendation is to go to sixty feet rather than forty-five.
That's pretty big.
Seen how this would affect any neighborhoods or any, any current landscaping of property owners?
Yes and no. I, if we did ten feet, sometimes we'd still have to go take out a fence. We have, we have issues all over and it's enforcing it with still maintain good public relations. You know, it's their favorite tree, but it's gonna be dangerous. We have to cut, you know, cut half the branches down or take the whole tree out. So it's been a struggle for our streets department to try and enforce it. Um, but.
It's gonna be more difficult to enforce.
Oh, yeah.
Sixty feet.
Oh, yeah.
So.
What's, what's the associated expense with that? When you start thinking, city has to move in power and moving other things.
Yep.
And it's all.
We're moving power.
Everything then.
No.
No.
This is going forward.
Going forward.
Oh, so grandfathering will be.
Everybody, uh, unless it's a danger.
Yeah. Health and safety and then all new development. And that's what Ed does. He takes citizen requests from city staff and also just this, um, yeah, just residents. Hey, I can't see the stop sign. It's completely in the tree. Cause Marlo found one that was, couldn't even tell what sign it was. It was, it disappeared.
That makes sense. We're retrofitting the whole city to meet this new standard.
Yeah, we're not gonna drive the city and go, hey, this tree is now not in compliance. We're gonna hack it down just because of site. Now, if there's an issue and man, it is really dangerous, yeah, the tree would come out.
So you, the city has, what is that, a enforcement officer? Or who, who does that? You mentioned Ed, did you? Or maybe I misunderstood you. Who, who?
Yeah, our, our street staff monitors it and kinda checks it out. Policemen, residents.
You have a code enforcement officer. He handles weeds and stuff.
If somebody.
You're gonna have to stand up too. He's like, oh, yeah.
Somebody, for example, built a fence without a permit in the wrong place.
Mm-hmm.
Making them move it. That'd probably be the code enforcement officer. But if it's blocking a sign or something like that, that's kind of in our public works. Let's take care of those things.
Is that all, Mike?
That's it.
Okay.
Maybe.
So below that is all the, uh, legal jargon that says this, but that's what, that's what's there.
So how does what he just mentioned compare to this?
Totally different.
Totally different. Okay.
Me and Junior and Chris wrote one and he did the other one.
Okay.
How come his is bigger?
He copied and pasted a lot more stuff than me. Oh, sorry.
Hey, Mr. Anderson.
We think there's a need to define a porch. So that's why there's that language. Uh, one of the reasons for defining a porch is to make sure that people won't try to confuse a carport with a porch. Um, there may not be a.
Pull that microphone towards you.
May or may not be a, a real concern, but, um, that something came up in a DRC meeting a week ago. So we made some changes. Again, just to find what a porch is without hopefully giving somebody an opportunity to say a carport's a porch.
Okay.
Just looking at the red then, the next change is on pa, oh, it's the next page. Um. Let's talk about churches. So without reading every single change in the document, uh, two different proposals. One has to do with eliminating a current requirement for churches to be located on collector or arterio class streets. Um, and I'll say this about all of the changes I have for tonight. If you guys wanna take a month to think about them, I don't see a problem with that. Uh, might be healthy, but again, today we require churches to be located on a collector or arterio class street. I don't know the actual origin of that requirement, but I assume it has to do with concerns about traffic that churches generate, which honestly is a non-issue. And we have a couple of different churches that we've talked about or that have been built in recent years in Spanish Fork where even though they're on or adjacent to a collector or arterio class street for various reasons, we don't want them actually even to access that street. Um, one on Canyon Road, almost pulled over tonight and we drove by to take a look at. It's been there four or five years. It's been now maybe more like five or six. Um, it's on the road, doesn't access it. Is the traffic a problem? Is it a real issue?
So I was gonna ask with that, with the, uh.
Legacy farms?
Legacy farms on Spanish Fork Parkway, is there an access?
On Spanish Fork Parkway, but no access. And in fact, that's what got me thinking about whether this requirement still makes any sense. Um, and also thinking about, and I almost regret that we're talking about LDS churches typically, but this would not just apply to an LDS church, but, um, that being the most common thing that we see uh, in our part of the world. Um, there are a lot of communities where I can think of churches that are in, uh, in the middle of neighborhoods, accessed just by local streets. Got traffic on Sundays and evenings, literally the times when your street system's being used the least. And this is not an issue. So, um, it still would not prevent the church or a church from locating on a collector or arterio class street. It just wouldn't require that. The other thing about churches and proposed changes that, um, we want you to maybe think about. Uh, right now churches are permitted uses in some zoning districts where personally, I don't think they belong. So talking about things like our shopping center zone or our commercial two zone, where really the intent of those zones is to re-retain or preserve space for commerce. And are churches bad neighbors? No, not at all. Um, do they maybe add something to development? Sometimes it's good. Yes. Um, do they come with some baggage sometimes that's a challenge for certain businesses? Yes. For example, um, certain businesses have to be a minimum distance away from a church. And to be real blunt, the Palmyra Stake Center, Tenth North and Sixth East, that creates some challenges and really limits, um, our ability to have other uses in close proximity to that facility. Do we love that church? Absolutely. Is it a great part of the community? You bet. Um, but do we wanna limit, um, the number of times that we're gonna have churches in close proximity to sites where we might wanna have certain uses in the future? I think we do. Um, so that's where that language comes from. It's out of that concern. Um, just the, the idea that we would eliminate churches as a permitted use from basically our different zoning districts that are intended to accommodate commerce.
That's, uh, a little bit different from quite a few other areas. There's a lot of churches that are not LDS churches who are built in different zones now, primarily because they use cheaper building material. They're building metal buildings and stuff like that for use as a church. Or, you know, they have more, I don't know exactly why they're building there, but I think if there, there's really a nice one over in Orem just before you get off of the exit there on thirteen, you know, I can't remember the name of the church, but it's next to the car lot.
Yep. I know exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah. And, uh, in Salt Lake, I've been to a couple of places that are commercial places that I had businesses or reason to go there to pick things up, you know, and there's a church in there. Matter of fact, we had one not too long ago. It was, no, it's still there next to McDonald's, right?
Yeah. Yeah. Um. I- initially, when, uh, we started talking about this change, my biggest concern was some pushback from the LDS church. This would make some of their churches non-conforming uses, which would have some impact on, on them. I think it's negligible, uh, by way of the impact. The real impact is gonna be on different denominations that might rely on their ability to occupy a two thousand foot vacant strip retail space, which has become very common, uh, for people to occupy and use. Um, and. There was. In fact. There was. That's exactly, yeah. That's a, that's a great case in point. Um, I'm not looking forward to those conversations, you know, maybe with somebody representing, uh, those different organizations that, uh, would have a much harder time finding a suitable space in Spanish Fork. Um, but yet having that church fifty feet away from Huhat had a very real impact on Huhat. Um, and, uh, I, I think we also have an obligation to look out for, for those types of uses in certain parts of the community. And with the understanding that churches can still locate geographically in most of Spanish Fork, just not our commercial districts. So, um, that's one in particular that I'm very comfortable just having us maybe, maybe think through or think about for a month or act on tonight if you'd like, but, um.
Act on it and fight that battle when it comes.
Comfortable with that as well. You bet.
It will come.
So you'll see several references then on the next several pages. Uh, just in that bold red, strike through, uh, type of language that deals with churches. Then down to page thirteen, I think is where we get into the next, uh, kinda set of changes. Uh, Mr. Voorhees talked about the requirement to have a masonry wall. And I really do think his project is a great, uh, one to study from the perspective of, does it really make sense to require a masonry wall in all cases where you have a multi-family use next to a single family use? Um, in my mind, the way you can read right there, uh, there should be an opportunity to grant an exception. So this is language that is just, would just be in the infill overlay zone to allow for an exception to that masonry wall. Only talking about infill projects, not talking about the R four zone, R five zone, any of that, just infill. And only in cases where that multi-family project has four or fewer units. There's nothing necessarily magic in my mind about that four unit limit. The idea simply is that, um, it's a small project. And because it's a small project, um, something other than a masonry wall, you know, maybe a suitable separation between that and a neighbor.
So this is quite specific to the Voorhees project.
It ends up sounding like that for sure, but it certainly could apply elsewhere.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, so in that event, it sounds like there's some options for the city council or probably the city council, I guess, to come up with a different fence. They may say chain link's fine in this particular application. Is that what this gives that latitude of?
I don't think it goes that far because chain link, I think is precluded in that section of the code where we talk about fences and walls. So.
But vinyl.
Check that. You could do vinyl. You could do wood. You could do the rhino.
Okay.
You know, it's kind of the look alike. Any of those would.
If that would've been not a fourplex, it would've been a sixplex, would it not have in this?
Then it wouldn't qualify.
It may be masonry.
It would. And like I said, I mean, four, five, six.
Yeah. Can we just get rid of the number and let it be our discretion?
Absolutely. If you'd like. You bet.
Jump in real quick.
Flexibility depending on the situation.
Got it.
I mean, why not? We're gonna be making a judgment call anyway, right? And we say, oh, well, it's twelve units and they have little kids and it needs to be a six-foot masonry wall. But everybody else around there, I don't know. Why don't we just give ourselves flexibility? Cause four seems really restrictive to me.
So this is the Voorhees up there, right here? I believe John Smiley came to this group, didn't he, with that?
He did.
Yeah. So that's his right here.
And that was gonna be.
So that was gonna be my question. What about?
Something, right?
Eighteen, twelve, fifteen, whatever it was, is then, is that a masonry wall automatically just because it's more than four?
Yeah. So I just like some flexibility and then we'll use judgment based on the neighborhood, the area of the city, whatever it is.
Is, is that gonna be an infill overlay if that was to come to us?
Yeah.
So these infills already create kind of a unique.
They do. Cause you've just.
I mean, to Clint's point, really, we're, we're number one deciding if it's infill. And then we have all sorts of latitude to, you know, dress up the architecture, to change the landscaping, to talk about the fence. So I kinda agree with Commissioner Argyle on that.
Just some flexibility.
How do you guys feel about that?
Yeah.
Just stri- just striking the quantity.
Uh. I don't know. I. You're going to get some who will come in and say, well, you did it for that guy and why aren't you doing it for me unless you do specify a quantity? You're talking about the infill, infill overlay. I would say that a, a project that has as many as eight, you know, if you, if you can afford to build an eight-plex or a building with that many, uh, units in it, you can afford a fence. Where it may not be the, like, in the case that we have right here with, uh, adding the two units that are already there, that just seemed really excessive to require that masonry fence on the back. But I think that, you know, and I think that this group can easily make that decision on a, on a case-by-case basis. But as soon as we approve one for, you know, like, if he would've wanted to have, uh, just added on to that and taken four more units out the back and made that now, you know, uh, eight units, would we have felt the same way about that fence? I don't know.
Probably not.
So do we want to protect ourselves with the number or not?
My thought, John, is we're gonna have so many varieties of this so far. I mean, I'm just seeing infill the last few times I've been here. It was rare before then. But they're always gonna be unique. And I think if somebody comes and says, you did it for them, you should do it for me. We're gonna say, no, cause it's unique. Every one of these infills is unique. And I think we're gonna just have to deal with it's unique.
And to tell you the truth, I don't mind taking the, the heat. I don't mind taking the heat for a decision. I mean, I'm perfectly comfortable with, with a group like this, this group in particular, but a group like this, making a decision that is an informed decision.
Yeah.
So I don't have a problem with doing a way. How do you feel about that, Dave, and you guys on the staff?
You can tell that the idea is to allow for some flexibility. That's the concept.
I don't have a problem with the fe- flexibility with that, with, with that, with the number being taken out, I guess.
I think you, you, you hit the nail on the head when you, when you just said, a, a person that's gonna build a, a unit of twelve units or something. I mean, that's, that's our justification, right? This is, this is a big financial investment.
Higher density.
You're, you're really changing the dynamics of this neighborhood. We want a masonry wa- wall. And that's your decision and that's why. But, but in the Voorhees project, boy, with how much fence he had, I wouldn't doubt that that was a, a swing deal, whether he could even financially do it.
I, I think you're right.
Okay. Okay. So. Guess that's the recommendation from the commission is to.
Just to keep track, on page thirteen, we would simply have it read, uh, an exception to the requirement to install a masonry wall where a multi-use, but it's a single-family residential user district may be waived where the city council finds that a different fence or wall is sufficient.
Yep.
Got it.
Subject to city code or whatever it is. Cause you're saying we can't do chain link. We can't do buck rail. We can't do. You might wanna say according to city standards or whatever. Cause right now it doesn't say according to city standards. It almost sounds like we have the latitude to do a chain link or a buck fence or a rail fence.
Right.
Whatever.
And that, that actually, I'm ref- I'm going through right now that section that this landscaping, buffering and walls point references, and it does not, I haven't found anything yet that would preclude somebody from at least proposing chain link with slats. There's one application where we specifically don't allow that in the city, but here, somebody could propose it. So it would just be again, part of that case-by-case review and saying yes or no unless you want me to add. I, we kind of went through this back a few months ago where we talked about solid fence and, and defined that. Um, and what that means, and maybe that's a sufficient clarifier.
Could you, could you refer back to maybe, maybe some section that allows for vinyl or, what was that other one?
Rhino?
Rhino.
Yeah. Cities fencing standards, whatever this...
Yeah, I like that, because then it's not, we have to go back and forth with somebody on, no, you're not gonna be able to put in a PVC pipe fence.
I'm not a fan of the, of the slats in the chain link fence. I think that's just putting lipstick on a pig, so in my opinion, we just say no chain link fence, period. In this case, I mean, you can put it, you know, around your yard, if that's what you want to do.
I'm not laughing at your, your statement, I'm laughing at your lipstick on the pig.
Now you think, uh, sister payment.
If you could reference that back to something, I think everybody's in favor of not having chain link being an option. Mr. Anderson?
You've got it, got it. I'm just reading the initial offense now, and uh, that doesn't totally cut it for us. But um, in, in maybe to, to support what you're saying, there's flexibility and there's also predictability. So allowing for you guys to consider something, the city council to decide on something different, but also if there are things that you know you won't consider, we might as well write that in, like chain link with slats so that...
Bingo.
That people are not totally taking a shot in the dark.
And that way they know when they come in meeting with the city staff that you're gonna tell them, here's your list of options that the...
Where they say, hey, how about chain link with slats?
You say, nah, it's not gonna work.
Dave, one, one clarification on this, it says where the city council finds that a different fence or wall is sufficient. Is infill, infill overlay always referred to the city council?
Yes, because it's a...
So we're just going to, we will always just be making a motion or a, a recommendation, okay?
Correct. Okay. Now referencing kind of back to that first one that we talked about, porches, page 16, this might be kind of hard to see. Point number two here, so right now, we have a couple of different standards that apply in these different residential zones right here. You can see the footnote um, that we have. We describe a range of front setbacks of 20 to 25. 20 feet is the minimum front setback to living space. So if you have, for example, a living room that extends out on the front of your home, that can be as close as 20 feet to a property line on the front, it's usually the sidewalk. But your garage has to be at least 25, 25 feet from the sidewalk. So if your garage is on that same plane as the whole rest of your house, then the whole rest of your house has to be 25 feet back from the property line on the front.
Okay.
If there's a variation in those planes, or that plane, you have, have it stepped somehow, again, you can have a living space out a little bit closer. Yep, this is a really good example because you got a side entry garage, so it's kind of a non-issue, but our minimum setback requirement here would be 20 feet to this living space. Um, now the proposal, yeah, versus 25 feet in this case to the garage, because the living space is setback. Now, this is a good one to stay on mic, because the proposal here, good one with a little imagination, uh, is to allow somebody potentially to have a front porch come out, and it's defined the way we saw at the front, uh, something that's open on three sides, two within 15 feet of that front setback line. So actually, maybe the other side of the street might be better.
But this probably isn't too accurate in the representation of where this might come in. I can see it happening where a residence is at the minimum at 20 feet. And they, and they need, and they need that additional area to put their porch on, or to cover their steps. Uh, I don't know who's gonna want to really put a porch out, you know, 10 or 15 feet from their...
There's somebody.
There'll be somebody, I guess.
That's why you're, you're hearing about it tonight.
The definition of a porch.
So number two didn't have red, it just started with the 20 feet to living spaces. All right, you've added this.
I've added this, and then if you're comfortable with this, then I would go back on that range, and this would be 15 to 25 instead of 20 to 25. And it would be, everything would read just the way that it is.
Okay.
So yeah, an older home's probably a better example, so uh, here, porch, open on three sides, uh, shelter to cover a pedestrian access to a home. And if this house were to be built today, the living space here, you would have, you would have to have 20 feet to the sidewalk. Uh, but with the proposal that's made tonight, your front porch could be closer to the sidewalk than that, as close as 15. This is not gonna cause a revolution in how people build houses or add porches to their houses in Spanish Fork. Today, we have one specific resident that would like to add a front porch, and right now, I think they're 23 feet from the front property line, and he'd like to put a six or seven foot porch on, so you know how sometimes these things come about? That's, that's why it's...
Yeah, okay.
I think, I think it makes sense.
I don't see a downside to it, I really don't. When frankly, if we were to go to a part of town, we get a lot of examples of older homes that were built closer than 20 feet to the sidewalk and some still comes up every day. It works. And, and just see a couple more references to just up in the moving churches. Then on the last two proposed changes that come from our building official, page 20. Boy, this one is even kind of a, a hard one to explain. It's actually okay here, was added to the code three or four years ago. I don't think our building official ever felt really comfortable with it, and uh, he's asked that we remove it. We don't typically want um, accessory buildings that are attached to, to anything to go all the way to a property line. We want there to be some kind of separation. There actually are a couple of neighborhoods in town uh, where we have subdivisions that were built in an era where you didn't necessarily always see an attached garage, and you won't go in after the fact and have constructed carports all the way to property lines. And yeah, a lot of times this comes up, I think almost it's kind of a fear tactic to scare people into worrying about things, but literally, we have had situations where a house on one side of a property line is caught on fire, and because you've had a structural connection literally between two adjacent homes.
Spread.
Two adjacent homes catching on fire as well, basically a fuel ladder between the two. So among other reasons, I think that's a good one, just don't make this probably a bad idea to start with. It's a good time to take it out.
What's, what's the distance required?
Typically, it's just five feet.
So five feet is somewhere in the code?
Yes.
Five feet for each, so that makes a 10?
It was, yeah, so it was five on each side of the property line. And that's it, that, that's the minimum, in some other zoning districts it'd be 10 on each side. And the last one, this is just to clarify um, how we measure setbacks, simple thing. Again, I think this is a change that was made a long time ago with, with good intentions. Uh, if you build an accessory building, you have to have that accessory building five feet from property lines. If it's more than 200 square feet. So basically, a single car garage, if that's 21 feet deep by 10 feet wide, it has to be setback five feet from property lines. It also has to be five feet away from your house or from the principal building. And how do we measure that? Well, we think we need to just simply say it has to be five feet from the property line, period. So whatever, whatever sticks out the farthest, whether it's a foundation or a wall or an eve, that's what we measure from. Right now, it's five feet, except we'll leave a foot for an eve that, that extends into it, and some different things like that. Might seem like a big deal, but we have a lengthy conversation with people to understand what that means and things like that. So for the sake of third communications, um, I don't think this creates a hardship in any way. Our building officials recommend that we make that change as well. So those are the other changes that um, we have tonight uh, public hearing. If you wish to hold that, and you can put a reaction in light.
We can open it and close it in the same motion.
We'll go ahead and go into open uh, public hearing. Anybody here, back there behind? Nobody? Okay, we'll go out of public hearing. What's the feeling of the commissioners, you want to act on this tonight?
I'm okay with proposed changes. Yeah, there's, Dave, you think you got them all made?
Yeah, this is, uh, we would anticipate bringing anything else to you for several months.
Dave, on page eight, uh, located on a collector arterio street, uh, on page eight, under A, uh, number eight. Unless that's different for... This is infill, no, it's RR, it's RR.
In that case, I think we're comfortable with it.
With a staying?
Oh, you know what?
I, I think that one's supposed to be struck.
If I missed it there, I'll bet I missed it someplace else.
Well, I, I don't know. But I, I think, I think I've got enough information to uh, act on it this evening, right? I think it should be passed.
Can we just make an recommendation? I'll make a motion that we recommend that Title 15 amendments be made, um, including the change on page 13E. And that was discussed.
Got a motion from Commissioner Tagg, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
And a second from Commissioner Menon Hall, all in faith.
Aye.